We haven't had a updated memorandum of understanding with them in quite a while, so we're. Now we have some focus, we're trying to get those things on the books, bring them forward. Get back into knowing where community partners are. Getting trained on it, so we can work hard getting lots of stuff going, so I will hand it up to Luke. Sometimes Kathy might have to jump out and then jump back in the meeting if you are having troubles. What I said.
Okay, well, the CDCCC, Carnation Duval Citizen Court Council is a volunteer organization that can help in emergency situations when our. Primary services are either overwhelmed or need additional assistance. So this MOU is outlining their capabilities and how they can help us in a disaster emergency event, everything from. They have a bunch of capabilities, but like search and rescue, they have an amateur radio group that can help when the tape can go down. For instance, like what they did the other day during our wildfire event with the telephone and all going down. If that was an extended event, they'd be able to assist in that situation. We even had a meeting last night at the fire station, went over radio protocols with them and how they could attach to our emergency operations center in a crisis. They have neighborhood watch crew. They have a medical emergency response team with varying capabilities, be able to help and assist if it's a broader scale incident. And our local EMS services aren't able to provide adequate care, or if we get cut off for a flood and people can't get to us. Just a really good resource to have. And then one of the really, really good resources is they are training extensively in setting up. Emergency shelters, so for instance, if we had to evacuate people through a wildfire. And get people out at the school on cots with food and. Water and supplies to be able to get everybody in one centralized location there, trained on setting up those shelters and assist us in that. Sit down, Dirty.
Whatever, just for an order to a camera still.
Yeah, she also may have seen the.
True, yeah. Kathy, can you hear us?
I can now, can you hear me? It was kind of going in and out.
You can now, Kathy, thank you so much.
I'm sorry, can you repeat that? I'm in a remote from an area that doesn't have a great signal, so I apologize. But can, what did you just say to me?
We can hear you, maybe just share a quick bit about the citizens corps and your involvement and moving forward with us.
Great, thank you. Well, thank you for letting me attend your council meeting tonight. Some of you may be familiar with the Carnation Duval Citizen Corps, and for some of you, it might be new. I know that Luke went over some of the highlights of some of our programs. Basically, we have been incorporated as a nonprofit of 501(c)(3) for about 20 years now. And we have previously had a memorandum of understanding with both the cities of Duval and Carnation. And so really what we're presenting now is kind of an update on that. I think the last time that we had an agreement with the city of Duval was about. Maybe six or seven years ago, and we just wanted to make sure that our information was correct, your information was correct. And it basically, I don't know if Luke had given you all a copy of that agreement or not. But it basically states, you know, as he mentioned, what our different programs are, what our different capabilities are. As a volunteer organization, and I think we may actually be included in your. Emergency action plan right now, I'm not sure, as a volunteer base. Again, we're just volunteers that have, some of us have special training. And we wanted to be able to help other communities, especially if we couldn't get to a work location. But we were at our homes and we wanted to be able to help out as well. So really, the memorandum of understanding is stating, you know, the capabilities that we have. And what your understanding is of what we can do for the city as well. Again, we're a volunteer base, and so all of our members are just volunteers, they're not paid staff at all. And we, with the city of Duval in the past, we have been involved with helping out with, say, the. The Holiday Tree Lighting Festival, we've helped with traffic control for that. We've also been involved with the Duval Days. In the past, our medical reserve car group has helped set up a first aid station for that. And then we've also had informational booths that have been done in conjunction with the fire department. As far as things that we do on a daily basis, of course, we do teach a lot of classes, we've been involved with the CPR first aid AED class, the Stop the Bleed class. We've taught ham radio classes. We've been teaching the CERT classes, which is our Community Emergency Response Team classes. Gosh, for, well, since we started, so for 20 years now. But again, we try and. Get the public more informed about what they can do as far as preparedness for their own families and how they can help their communities as well, so. Again, we're just trying to update our MOU, make sure that everything is current, and make sure that you all understand what our capabilities are. So I guess, I don't know if you have any other questions for me?
One question, I have some here.
Let's see, I do have a quick question. How many people are in the corps? Does it have a defined membership or is it a little more loose than that?
So we have, over the years, we have taught approximately, I guess, probably between 550 and 600 people for the CERT classes. And again, they have the option to either use this for their own personal training, or they can respond. We, because we were one of the first citizen corps that was set up in the county. We were set up before the sitting course councils were required to be part of a city. So right now, the county is quote unquote our parent. So whenever we're doing things, when we're setting up our schedule for the year, or when we're on responses. We are always communicating with the county through the Department of Emergency Management. So we do get our volunteers who are interested in doing more than personal preparedness. We get them badged by the county, so they're temporary emergency workers. I would say. Within the people who are actively working right now between our medical reserve car group, our CERT group, and our ham radio group. I think we have about 150 badged volunteers.
Right, so that's good, you know, excellent. And I, I also have to say them non, non, well, you can go ahead, don't show, anyway. So, so we talked about this previously in council meetings, and I know you aren't here yet, but others. Heard me go on about this, but, but for a true emergency situation, disaster of something like, you know, wildfire, earthquake, name, you name it. We have to have the citizens involved, there's absolutely no way we could be successful without that. And going back to my favorite example of, you know, being able to evacuate Duval or Carnation. We have to have people assigned to neighborhoods, making sure that the older folks and other people that may not be aware of the situation. Are notified and have the ability to actually evacuate, and that's one example, there's obviously more, but anyway, so I wholeheartedly support the need. It was citizens group and incorporation into our, into our legislative management area for that.
Very, thank you. And if I can just add one more thing to that. We have been involved working with the fire departments in both Carnation and Duval. When they do exercises for evacuation, specifically in Carnation. We do annual drills, and we have done evacuation drills a couple of times, and we participated with the city of Carnation. When they have had their, they do an evacuation walk. At the end of September, where the citizens can walk up to the top of the evacuation hill, and we've been involved with that as well. As, as Luke had mentioned before, we've also been involved with the Red Cross as far as training our volunteers in the way of how to work in shelters. One of our other programs that probably wasn't mentioned is we try and promote Map Your Neighborhood. Which is sort of evolving into another thing called Two Weeks Ready Through the, Through the State. And specifically the Map Your Neighborhood program, we try and get. People educated, then when they live in certain communities, like say, for example, in the city of Duval, we've taught Map Your Neighborhood a couple of different times. And we'll get people who are, say, maybe all living on the same street, or, you know, in a couple of cul-de-sacs who are next to each other, who would be able to respond and help each other out. Because of course, in a big event, our local first responders are going to be doing other jobs, so we need to make sure that. That the citizens do know how to take care of themselves, like you said, how to evacuate, how to help each other out. And so that's a program we always try and promote within both the cities of Carnation and Duval.
Good, thank you.
Another question, is there comments from council? Great, any, did you guys have anything else on this?
Not that anyone.
Well, I, thank you both, I think this looks really good, and I'm excited, I feel like. Become more active with this as well, I'll look into, if somebody wanted to volunteer, Kathy, I'm assuming we look you up, send you an email, and there's some kind of website that you would sign up to be included on emails?
Exactly, we have a main email address that would come to me specifically, it's info at C D C C C dot U S. We also have a website that's at that same address, it's the C D C C C. Dot U S is our website link, and then we also sponsor a page on Facebook called Carnation Duval Disaster Preparedness. Where we put up, we allow our members to share, and then we put up information as well. That talks about preparedness, or when there's a response going on, we will post to that as well.
Great, well, thank you very much.
Great, well, thank you. If you don't have any other questions for me, then I will probably just log off, so thank you again, Luke, for getting me involved with this and for the council, and. If you have any questions about the MOU, please don't hesitate to reach out to me as well.
Sounds good, thank you and have a good night.
Thank you, you too.
All right, so with that, we will move on to our A R C discussion, and I'll hand that off to Director Lunschowski.
Oh yes, late in the day, it's been. Overwhelmingly busy. Screen here, share. So A R C did provide a significantly more comprehensive plan than you have seen in the past. I'll pull it up here, it says promoting, shares. Both disabled participants screen share. I don't mind sharing. And one screen slows me down, so. All right. So just, you'll get an email along with the updated draft and a little bit here. But part of the notes on what has, I'll open some extra part of those. While corrections and edits are made, there are still typos. Try to be fast then if your brain can, mine doesn't like to, but it's where we are at. So there's an appendix that has all of our core data that's been produced. Capital needs assessments are now provided for, edited the ones for City Hall. And S C I is not an acronym, it is the business name of one of the sub consultants. So S C I has the condition information in there, graphics that have been updated. Further clarification of graphics and descriptions of the rapid assessment matrix, as long as, as well as the S C I matrix. Cleaned up some mapping. I'll make that a little bigger. Sorry, this reorganized, some of the operation planning, capital facility improvements. We still have, again, some placeholders, filling in the blank, more conversation with council. But as far as what we had last time relative to what we have now, there's a lot more in there, they have provided results. Remember, we are having an consultant provide information and stuff, not staff, so that's. Take it with a grain of salt, whether you like it or not, it's a discussion item. So you'll see that when you start to go through it, and we'll kind of skip around and show some information. Some of the feedback from workshops that have incorporated. New layouts, and then they have their, their dream shop for the city. He's tightly inspirational option A, so anyway, that is just the summary of highlights in memo form. Let's see how this can be productive. Refresh. One thing about this program is not. Going over the table of contents now, so their summary. Facilities, condition assessments, their operational program planning. Capital facility improvements, financial analysis. Their planning level options, and then a lot of the information to help them get to where they are and, you know, assessing what we have. So a little more information, recommendations on a per facility basis. The map that was provided for. Skip too fast, but I know we went back and forth and talked about how converting equivalency dollars. Once you see the table here. So literally, in the last discussion, we talked about. City halls, an example of retain, renovate, or build new, and how those costs require apples to oranges, so. The attempt at making those. More summarized from our meeting is included. Their recommendation, it's super hard to print, so far though. Part of the issue is printing it off today wasn't necessarily possible in our move, and this is laid out, that's too previous, why? So it's quite odd to print, and some of the sheets have their own, like, long sheet, that's not quite fully like this one, so. For an end user like me, it's a little difficult. Cleaning out all of the documentation and some of the annual costs. Is mostly done, Larissa's been working with them, and the finance repair consultant, S C I. I think the bigger parts. Under their financial recommendations, analysis section, planning options. I think you've seen some of these things, but they really. Kind of went into this. Narrative of how and why, what they recommend. So, a lot more to go over. In whole, and again, these are again their representations for discussions with you all, of course, as staff, providing information for them, and you all in detail. But is. More reading, so.
I just sort of had, and this is definitely thirsty, which I'm gonna be, but in, in. What's your general assessment to how many additional durations are going to be required to get it in plan for me, do you think? Based on your initial read-through, we're close, or do you, didn't see multiple touch points, I know we've been. It's kind of an incremental process, and we've been finding deficiencies and asking for changes, do you see a lot more? Additional back and forth, or are we getting close to a finished product that we can start to make some decisions on?
I would hope like two discussions more to chat about what's in here, right, there's more in here now, you can have more response. Clarification, questions, that's another go around, and then, yeah, just. Getting to the end, it's not like it's, I don't know, there's certain things that are simple, and this is just a topic that isn't simple, like, it's not like it's an engineer, but. Get a few options, get some to the leaner bag, but this is like. Lonely hole, so it can be anything, anywhere, so that's the harder part.
Yeah, it's just, I guess, what I was asking, sort of, when we have the source of truth that we can rely, we start to. Inter, inter, internally to make some decisions around that, I think that's.
And I do think a regular meeting isn't probably going to be enough to sit, and I think it's a. We need more time, and I think our council meetings are pretty full here on out, we have confidence up, that's jumping into. Into everything too, so I don't know how we can facilitate extra meetings, but. You know, virtually, we can try to squeeze some in, I think that might be helpful. Yeah, it's just a lot.
From what you've seen, does this version get a little more into potential site options? Because that was one of the things, like, way, way back to the meeting, where we really got into this process that we were really interested in, is. Okay, so if we go with option A B, what are potential areas, and then the one that's super obvious to me is the public works yard. You know, we were all pretty clear, yeah, I don't like the idea of a next door to, so what are other options, I know we talked about some, but. Do you see that in this version, where it gets a little more into here, some potential sites, options, pros, cons type of things, I thought that was a part of the original.
So still, and they tried to make it amorphic, so let's talk about what it should be, maybe don't worry about where. Is or can be, but they still cite the Dory Farm. But there's more, I think there's more detail in how it. Like what needs to be there to function as the operations site, so. But no, it's still, you saw, still should have done Dory Farm, they show something here, good, better, otherwise. And again, they tried to make some of it amorphic, where it's, they could have it in places, but that's just like. I don't know, I think you can't really pick a site either. Something that you don't own, because you don't know if you can buy it, and I don't know that you can do condemnation for facilities, it's not like it's a road, so. That's what makes it really hard to dictate where it's going to go, if we don't already want to play that, especially, so. Which is, which is why I think they kind of backed some of it up to the.
Yeah.
This is what it should facilitate and get you. You know, on a site, but the site isn't that important, other, they went pretty whole hog on a. On a vision on this parcel adjacent to the Lonely Hole, because we own them both. And you can facilitate any of the things that we need to cite into this two sites. So I think that's kind of what I'm doing, and was very excited to kind of bring that to the. Forefront or the back of the, of the document. So that's not my main answer, it's not my answer, it's, this is really squishy stuff.
Yeah, I think I was thinking more high level, just to make sure, like, I love the idea of that, but just making sure, is there a high level that's for sure feasible, from what we know? First, you know, any major factors of that probably would be super expensive, more so than how expensive it will be.
Next to, and they're big, so.
Councilman Appleton?
Yeah, I mean, I think that's also kind of what I'm curious about. Is that, just what we talked about at the last meeting, and the ones before, that the Dory Farm's dead, I don't even think, I mean, kind of a historic site, I don't even, it just doesn't even. Doesn't make sense for a lot of reasons, but maybe it's just saying. You know what this is, so it's easy to orient yourself of how much space this would take by putting it on a known dose of property, so. While we all know we're not going to do it at Dory Farms, at least it kind of orients you of how much space we take that. So the other one that I think has been talked about is. We have limited funds, and one of the options would be. Having the police station remain where it is, and designing something in more of a canvas, I think we talked about that actually quite extensively of the idea of kind of creating a campus. Down there, you know, we've got the entrance to McConaughey Park, the police station, this building. And then, you know, potentially a city hall that does not have police below, or some, you know, and I don't know if. That was a pretty big conversation we had, and I don't know if any of that is reflected in an idea. What it would look like without police, because I think it pretty much doubles the size of the building we would need if they incorporated police. And so. You know, just all the days for the theme goals, and I mean, it's completely getting project. And so I think there was a lot of interest that I felt from the room of being able to see that option. Because we needed to design something that either we will be able to build and afford, so I mean, optimal isn't always. Even possible, you know, I, we have to live in. Reality.
Yeah, I do. I did think something like this, at least like you're saying, show us what we should have on a concept site, and this is just something that shows. And these are pretty good scales that they work on, like, that's about the spacing, so.
Okay.
I'm not locked on sites, because having purchased property or attempted to purchase property in the past, you know, your main career, you don't always get what you want.
How much space is that, you think, like, if you're talking about an acre, two acres?
I can measure, there's.
And that's another question for later, does it?
Yeah, it's a good size, it was probably a little bigger, yeah.
Here?
Yeah, I just wanted to note to, for folks to remember that the P D, while we did a remodel, it's still 10 years past its useful life, that building is not permanent last. So the remodel was an interim step until we can have a permanent facility, so regardless of whether or not we move forward. And start the community work with building, city hall, site selection, all of those types of things. The police department has to be replaced in, within a not too long period of time. And so when that building came in, it was only supposed to last 15 years, and we're almost, we're at 20, about, Steve, is that right, close to it, 18 to 20?
Yeah, about three.
So it is a temporary modular building, so one of the remodels.
I just want to make sure other council members do have that in so good.
Yeah, I was just trying to pull up the map of the pottery farm, I'm not. Quite convinced that that property isn't useful for our purposes. I mean, the house is not that big, there's all, how many acres are there?
In total, almost 20, some of them were bought with certain dollars, that you would have to buy out of, it was agricultural preservation, I believe, and we got some grant dollars. And that conveniently might be a piece that was not part of that, but again. There's always a way to unwind it, it just costs us something, which is just happens, and back pay, so there are options. Yeah, I think, I'll give you a note too about properties we own relative to the needs we have, and spatial, you know, spatially segment, because it is, I think it's helpful to. Drive by and see a site, no, I see the size, I don't care where it is in my mind, like, I can just see how it fits. You know, cost aside too, there's, there's a lot. So, yeah.
Well, what's, what's the problem with that coffee, I think quite an interesting example of this.
I was just gonna jump in early, but historically, the conversation we had was the concern about the character of the store. I was just gonna jump in early quick, historically, the conversation we had was the concern about the character of the historic property there and and you know. You can do all kinds of screening, right, to make it look less, I mean, you know what the public works yard looks like, right? So I think there was concern about altering the agricultural and historical character of that property.
Yeah, I mean, you go ahead.
Sure, Councilor.
I'm sorry.
I I don't like some some things, you know. Might outweigh that, that. Kind of my.
I've come into a couple, couple, well, one, I'm gonna say outside. The primary intersection from Main Street to Deans, this site is the, is the Cherrydale Road, which is. In my opinion, the most dysfunctional and dangerous intersection in the city. It is just completely a disaster. Um, and putting our public works up there with all the heavy machinery and most of them would want to come down. And make the left turn, which is, you know, difficult at best um. Down, down, well, actually, both the left and right turns are difficult, then you can have a big truck on that intersection, so that's one, one. And then if you don't beat through there, you're gonna be beating through first street or residential. Or the areas, and so that in my mind is a major downside of this. Secondly, uh. The 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 character of this and, you know, and our, you know, agricultural roots uh. And the fact that this has a gorgeous view out to the valley um. My, uh, I would never be in favor of putting anything there, except maybe a park or something like that. But not, you know, not a public site, I think that's a completely.
That doesn't necessarily have to go there, but.
Yeah, yeah, no, I I I'm just telling you what my my thoughts are.
I think everyone went again, so I'm gonna go ahead and throw in my question um. I don't know what I don't know here, so I think I see fuel or something. Is there a health, safety? Just curious, is it possible to have like an indoor public works yard? Because I'm thinking of the site down here, they're talking about the city hall, and I think originally you're talking about like police kind of being on the bottom, but. With the height of the hill and, you know, the terrain there, is that even a possibility or depends on dangerous substances or just health and general safety? Is that not possible?
I mean, everything is mitigatable. Fuel tanks, we have them on our properties now, they they require different uh management and containment. So, but yeah, a- again, these are just pieces that really. Show what we have and what we need for that specific use. Um, so. Understood, um, comments on space, I think we also talked about Big Rock being a better corridor for that. Um, before the later handout, one quick question for you folks. If you still have your council chat time, not that I want to. You know, ball of the community, but that's something you guys maybe have on your calendar, maybe that's some time that depends on for virtual TV, but anyway.
So, uh, let's see, McNabb and then Mary.
Um, so Jason and I, our communications coordinator, are working on a um community survey right now. And we're, we've almost gotten the draft finalized that. Um, this kind of beginning outreach to the community on, if you could have something in city hall, what would you want, where do you think it should be? You want not a splash park, but a splash pack. Do you want community space? Um, so we, uh, Jason just sent me edits today, we're almost at the end, a place where we can deliver that to the community. Ask some other things too about a logo and communication preferences, so it's kind of an engagement survey, but there's an extensive part around. City facilities.
I know we kind of started off on that foot and then things got busy, but you still want myself and Councilmember Appleton to look at it before, just to give any feedback or input?
So I did get feedback from Councilwoman Appleton, it incorporated that.
Okay.
So, um, what I'll do before I send it out to the community is bring a final draft council, I think at the next meeting. Let you all see it, see if you want to add anything to it, and then we'll deliver it out hopefully at the end of August.
Great, and Mary?
Um, just another note to, um, when, uh, just for those that haven't been around for the long history of this discussion, which even predates my time. Um, in the city is that one of the key components of getting um state and federal funding uh to reduce our local taxpayer burden on the cost of the building. Is um having a police department, your emergency operations center in your city hall. Um, you're able to really uh use resources efficiently, um, that money comes specifically to fund those. Um, those buildings and facilities, uh, and we all know that if we have a police station and we have a emergency management uh center. Uh, that emergency management center does not have to be only emergency management, it could be used for other resources of the city as well. So it is a very common tactic and a smart tactic to reduce that cost of that expensive capital project. Um, so, um, as it stands now, there's still lots of funding available for it. Um, we're about fifteen years into this conversation overall of the city since it started. Um, so, um, we don't know what it's gonna look like in the next few years, but we do know that that grant funding is likely to remain. Um, and I think that we are also um. Well suited in our area, especially considering. Uh, the latest reports for wild and urban interface fires to be a very high priority. To have a city hall that is protected from fire and a fully functioning emergency operations center. Um, it's becoming more and more critical, as we know from the fire last week. Um, in particular, that should have never, you know, really happened um in the city limits during this time of year, so. Historically, it wouldn't have, most likely. Um, so one of the books to keep that in mind too is that it's a big scary project, but at the same time, there are lots of resources and agencies that are um. Able and willing uh to come and help us find it if we're put in effort in.
Any other comments or questions on Councilwoman Appleton?
Yeah, I'm just kind of thinking through what I've had seen in other cities, and it it doesn't seem like. It's necessarily to call that the police station is incorporated inside a city hall. I don't know that I really. See that always, and I just kind of. I'm just trying to understand if it really would restrict us. From getting funding at an emergency operations center if police was not incorporated in the same building. And, um, I mean, I I think many cities, you know, it might be at the fire department, it might be, um. Different locations, and so incarnation is their emergency operations center and they contract policing and don't have any police station. Um, except I think maybe a room that the police can kind of. Um, have as a home base when they're in in incarnation, but they don't have a station incorporated into their new city hall, and I believe they're in emergency operations center, so. I'm not, I'm not saying that. We won't have an integrated or that this body will not decide that an integrated one is there. I just want to make sure that it's understood that. I would like to explore that as an option, whether it's chosen or not, and I. Don't. Fully think that. It would reduce. Our ability to call it a emergency operations center and qualify for funding, but.
You have another comment here or?
I was just kind of saying that I'm putting them out as two, they are two separate fund sources for that, when you can buy them. Your chances of getting that and getting more of it and fulfilling more of that obligation increase. So we can have a standalone building. But one, you know, one of the challenges of having us uh another standalone building is. We already have, for example, five houses that we're keeping care of right now. So your maintenance costs of the standalone billing and energy costs and all those other things continue to go up. Um, so when you do look at the long term, um, you know, we'll see what the consultant says instead of the community says. Um, but in the years that I've been researching this issue, this is. Um, stands our best chance of being able to. Uh, get the best facility that meets the needs of our community for now in the future. There's many different ways to do it, but um it does, when you bundle these things together, there are different funding sources. But they feed off of one another, kind of like you get, um, for example, you um have Lily. Uh, putting in money or committing money to a parks project. Uh, that helps with King County scoring, same goes for these types of projects when it comes to emergency management and public safety.
Yeah.
Yeah, and and I'll say we saw a really good example of an integrated city hall concept that. Um, they had put like a community kitchen in, so they got a Department of Ad Grant. And so they added these different community elements to it and ended up having your city hall almost fully funded by. About four or five different federal agencies all having keys of their city hall, putting in money for it, so there's a couple models out there. That we can research and bring to council on success of combining elements to get your city hall built and funded.
So, yeah, Director.
Well, I think that touches on kind of some flexibility, again, how standalone or not combined, what are the funding sources that may be outside of our pockets. Um, which maybe makes that site specific. You know, pointing to not highly prioritized. And then just like from an operational standpoint, I would be curious, put Cynthia on the spot, like. You've got staff, myself included, Laura, the chief, they're all on separate spots, like. How dysfunctional, relatively speaking, is that? Like, does it matter? It does matter. I don't know, you know. I I know my thoughts, I mean, you're brand new, but nobody has. No more thoughts about it, then I'm sure you do it this time.
I would tell you, it was not highly functional for me to have a small office in here. Run back to city hall, go to the police department, come back here, and then back here all in a matter of three days, I mean. There was a couple of weeks where I was in four places on a single day, and it was not ideal. Now, I don't know that we need to design a city hall with me in mind, but certainly from a morale standpoint and a functionality, like convening meetings. Meeting a leadership team, having us in a single building would. I think, uh, make a lot of sense.
Yeah, I think some of the very things that we don't necessarily see here, but in general have been, you know, some other places like. A person or director or department being in a certain way, they behave a certain way, when they're together, people are different, are they helpful, learning? Oh, I shouldn't trust them, you know, like, there's just more. Kind of synergy on how. Commonalities develop, I guess. I don't know, like I said, I've been placed at everybody's in the same place, we're. Completely not in the same place here, so. It's a big difference, and there is a cost to that, but there's also some value.
Yeah, I have noticed, I mean, I really appreciated um having a. Uh, at K C L S, we had an administrative building that was pretty large, but we had everybody in it. Like collections, the graphics department, everybody that was administratively inserved to the laundry, we're in one meeting. And we just convened regional meetings and each other. Uh, in a pretty convenient way. Now, the ball's on a big day, so we can block them straight, but, um, yeah, I mean, I think from a cultural perspective, it makes a lot of sense.
I'm just gonna add to, because even I've been here for a really long time, it is really difficult to go from building to building. I can easily waste forty minutes a day just traveling between buildings every day and week.
Well, go for it, you need your laptop or, I mean, you know, I've got to go back, I mean, there's fifteen minutes.
And that's, I mean, if you think about it from a line perspective, if our line staff are doing that, they're not working more than eight hours a day, so one eighth of their day is spent. Walking between buildings, so.
There's a value.
Hmm.
So just to bring this back a bit, I wanted to check, uh, you're gonna be emailing this to us and then. Um, I don't know if anyone needed it printed or if you were gonna go ahead and do that anyways.
I think so, I mean, it's.
A pretty, it's an interesting.
If you don't, yeah, actually, if you don't kind of make sure you follow the page along on on the image, and you.
Yeah, and then, so it sounded like you were mentioning like a standalone meeting, potentially needing a schedule next year, or. I've, you've gotten some feedback here, but are you thinking like we'll come back together after we have a chance to really dig into that and review it? And we'll see what our meetings look like, if if we need to schedule a one off, even if it's all virtual or or some kind of hybrid then.
This one stacked up pretty quick, and I know we have one meeting coming in August, we'll probably stack up kind of the same.
It's already taken.
Yeah.
Well, potentially, we do have that out in the second hour in August, so we can always look, but I don't know if that would be time for everybody, so we can just lay it by your. Um, council member, simple?
Yeah, there's a, um, written in our contract that they not provided for paper documents or. So can we go back and ask?
Yeah, they, either way, they would have to deliver it out here or print it out here, but yes.
I mean, why should you do it when you're paying them?
Yes. Yeah.
A problem.
All right. There anything else on that, or it sounds like we've kind of moved that down?
Is that draft, they know, or?
Yeah.
More of the, did you say the?
I'll work through the big part, make sure.
Okay, so the time we have left, then, of course, to make sure, if you haven't already looked through those written reports and planning calendar. And I'll turn this over to our city administrator to go ahead and knock out the, or at least most of, I don't know, you said it's pretty big, so, the city administrator report.
Yeah, um, because we only have one meeting in July and we'll have one meeting, at least for now, in August, um, a lot of. A lot of information will be shared, I think, in the city administrator reports, um, so we'll go ahead and bring that up. And this one is probably the longest that we've had since I've been here. It's a lot of stuff.
And there's nothing police on.
What?
And there's not even police here.
That's right. Um, next page, next page. So just a reminder, we have some upcoming meetings, um. We have the uh joint planning mission and council meeting on housing on July twenty sixth. Uh, National Night Out Against Crime is August first, we are not having a council meeting that we normally would have on May eighth. And then August eighth, we have two community open houses, the Housing Action Plan, one in the um mid morning and one in the evening. Um, so if you want to participate in that, there'll be two options on August eighth. And so then I'm gonna turn um the next slides over to uh Director Thomas on community development.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, it obviously it's still busy out there in the community. Uh, we have a little bit slower of a month, but it's because we were busy in plan review. Um, so we're still pushing out permits, we're still doing inspections. But we are well over halfway to our goal for the biennial project, if that's important to us, which it is. And so we're still on track to issue term permits this year and to continue with inspections. Um, we are a little bit, you know, our staff is a little bit challenged right now, because we have one person out for a couple months. And we have, um. A vacant position, a portion of a vacant position as well, so we're gonna be going back out and trying to get a half time planner. For planning services, and if we can't do that, then we'll have to utilize. Um, consultants and see if we can flip some of our projects. Um, over to review, because we have a lot of new projects in, so you'll see that in a minute too. Next one. Uh, this is just our residential permits issued, so you can see we're up at over eighty and we have about ten ready for pickup. So that'll put us at ninety for sure, probably close to a hundred by the middle of August. So that's gonna be. So some good news, we are finally getting some commercial mixed use type development, and so. Um, Duval Village submitted their commercial retail development application, and so that's just a rendering straight out of the packet, so it's. For clarity, it is on Main Street and Hundred Forty Third, where we have a ninety nine attached units and D F A has. Um, their lot as well, so you can see there are two buildings. Um, there is going to be a dentist in one of the spots, likely a optometrist in another spot. And there's going to be a retail space and there's open space as well, because they have at least everything out, but they're about a third, if not half. Already committed, so that's a pretty big deal. Usually they do shell buildings. So we're real excited to see that. You can see, you know, looking on, um. Main Street, we did the best we could to try and work with the grades there, which is difficult, like anytime you're on. The west side or the east side of Main Street, it depends on what the grade is, and they they were really good to work with, it took us a while to get through it. We've been doing multiple kind of meetings and pre-applications before we came in. To try and get, you know, get what the community was looking for based on our call plan and our design guidelines.
Where is that located?
Uh, it is where Duval Village is, where the old barn is, so one forty third and Main Street, so there's that little internal.
Yeah, okay.
Yes. Excellent. Uh, this is another project that came in, it is truly mixed use, so it will have a residential, um, commercial and religious institution. And so you can see the renderings, this site is really difficult, so this is the residential retail portion of it. And it will, it will be pretty close to Main Street, it'll be a little bit elevated, but not too bad. And you can see in that second slide. Bottom, where you see those stairs go up, that's actually a lift for people to get from Main Street. Up to the top there, so there is a lot, there's a lot of grade there. Next slide. And this is a perspective drawing as well, so you can see, um, what the religious institution looks like. And so that kind of helps us see what it could look like when somebody driving down from Main Street or they're. You know, maybe even on the trail, so you can see there's, there's definitely a lot of grade to this site.
Yes.
What is, what is this building?
It's a religious institution.
So I'm gonna pause here. So I'm gonna pause here before turning over to see if anybody has any questions for Director Tom.
I'm just trying to orient myself of where this is.
It is on Main Street and about one forty fifth.
Right, true.
Yeah.
True.
Across the street. And so right next door to it will be the brewery. And catty corner to that will be sixty five degrees, and there is a project behind this one too. A commercial and residential development, so it is, it is popping. Yeah.
So, no, I'm sorry, let's go east side.
Yeah.
Yeah, the uphill side.
And when you look at that lower left picture, yeah.
Yeah, so you got hazed out buildings, there's a building on Main Street.
That's the one on the right.
Or.
Yeah, on the top.
It'll be behind you.
Eastern. So you're looking from like Main Street is the west side. And then the religious institution, which is a mosque, is on the east side. It's, it's a really large project. And I would, I do wanna say that they were really good partners. They didn't have to bring in. A commercial residential building. They could have just built religious institution. And they're like, yeah, we'd like, you know, we'd like to give something back to the community. So I think that was, that was really good.
What's the square feet or not?
Um, it's over ten thousand square feet. So and there's, there's actually two buildings. You can't really see it per se from there. But uh, the, the way they work is they have two separate buildings. One is kind of their community hall. You know, kind of like, you know, any other religious institution, and the other one is where they would worship. And then they have um, a really nice connecting plaza that, you know, that's, you know, a typical. Um, for a mosque that goes from one building to the next. Um. I didn't add any more slides, because honestly I did not have time today. It's just been really busy. Um, but we do have a lot of projects in review. The housing action plan. Um, is finally coming together, so we're excited about that. We too are waiting for our final documents so that we can get it out to council. Um, we will have that to you by Friday. We're finishing up the prep work for that. Um, we're actually in this program now called InDesign, which is kind of, you know, taking the big work documents and all the words and putting it into. What would, you know, more look like something that we will go through an adoption process for. Um, so we're excited for that joint workshop, and then that'll help lead us into the community open house. And one thing that we're worrying is to try in one day, potentially do two, like one in the morning for people that. You may not be available at one time, so we can try and get kind of two different groups. So we're excited. It'll be the first time. Um, we'll have a flyer that'll go out next week through social media. And we'll send it out to like our H O As and we'll, you know, we'll give it out to our businesses and we'll see if we can drum up some. Some people to come to that meeting. And then finally, obviously tonight you have um, the contract for. Um, the comp plan transportation plan, but just one other minor update. We are now getting ready to do interviews for our structural and space plan. So at next month's meeting, we'll see that contract. Thank you.
All right, next slide, and I'll turn it over to Director Lencowski.
Lots going on. I, I didn't put barely anything on here for the operations group. Is there, Trinity busy as well? Uh, summer stage. I know I didn't see those in here, but that's been going well. Scott's been working a little cast and Rita, uh. Couple of pickups here and there, you'd expect, you know, a smoking burnt up golf cart and other things, but things are being remedied. It's been repaired, so it wasn't a big deal. Uh, so we're about to begin the recruitment for our waste treatment plant manager. That is our current parent, so that's fun. Um, one forty second, second street project's complete, city hall carpet replacement is complete. Uh, we're about to begin the access, access project for city hall.
Uh, okay, pause really quick. Uh, council, please come check in your mailboxes and we'll set up mailboxes. Because there will be a period of a couple of days where we'll take the keys and replace them with access cards. So um, if you need your mail, please come get it um, soon while we're in, in the replacement period.
And then if you disassemble the box together, so hopefully in the right spot, if your box is left, you write one slot. Police station is complete, wrapping up paperwork and doing the final math. I know I presented back in February about changing our kitchen. We were not, I'm splitting hairs, we probably could fit it in under the manager's reserve, but I just think we'll put it on the paperwork and bring it to council. So that's what the add-on is. Uh, trying to wrap that product up. Uh, toll two replacement, our permit has been issued, so we're finalizing the plans. Roll through the final comments that were submitted to us, the permitting agencies, which is great news. Uh, overlay prep is starting. If you've seen the Verden messes points out those are us. Uh, they're gonna be stock bidding, doing ramp and repair work first, and then doing a relay and then striping initially. Uh, we do use King County for striping services. We bitted those costs last year. Ten cents on the dollar, they go to the county, so we continue to go with them. They are a little. I won't say difficult, but they get to us when they get to us. So uh, they're not here yet, and you'll be able to see all the streaks nice and bright when they do here. Uh, wait, so our treatment office remodel began this Monday, so we are all moved out to the youth center. Finalizing things out of the building that's operated that way for forty years about is crazy. Uh, the little things you forget about, you know, antennas for telemetry controls, oh, another sensing unit for the fuel station car. collecting information, so yeah, lots of shuffling and moving and, and you know, adjusting, but we're, we're there. So contractors on site, um, they have met uh, with the waste treatment plant contractor. Cause they're going full speed ahead at the treatment plant, so tons going on. Uh, I don't know if any of you ever get complaints or questions or calls, but we have sent out uh, site distance letters to all houses in Old Town. So Benny's working on site distance corners and other driveway accesses, I said, a matrix of who's. Ask questions, no questions, repair their stuff or needs help, so we're, we're going through that a lot in Old Town. Um.
Yeah, what, what is a site distance notice?
So uh, there is code and design requirements, not design requirements. Facilitation of management of site distance, so how you physically see in a car. Yeah, so we gave notice to the two folks. Most of them are just interested in how they can correspond. Some of them aren't physically able. What do we do out of the help?
So what's the problem with those reasons to go?
Typically complaints. And then the growing season, so, yeah, a lot of vegetation. And then you get trees growing in the power lines, so then, you know, P S C subcontractor Aspen shows up and. We get blamed for taking trees down or topping trees, which we don't do, we don't touch anything electrical. Um, so yeah, there's just a lot of. Pretty robust growth in Old Town area, so. Pretty wild. Any questions on that side?
I have a question. Um, does the striping, is that just the roadway striping or does that include like stop sign lines too?
So we are, it does all, all the roadway striping, and then we have a separate task with them for the thermal plastic and, and ground markings. Those stop bars, crosswalks, turn arrows. So those are also contracted with King County. So we are prioritizing any side street adjacent to an arterial with some of the funds, because we don't have unlimited funds. You have so many funds, it doesn't go so far. Um, but they are, again, very cost effective for striking and thermal plastic. Applications. Next slide, if there's no more on that. So Pub Works, um. The project, the capacity construction project is going well. There are some parts that are somewhat delayed. Uh, the good news is there seems to be um. Alternatives that are gonna be. Uh, it will be approved on our end for some of the pieces and parts. It's mostly piping and, and some, some of the small things. Um. Twelve week uh, twenty weekly times, there's better solution, so. Uh, U V, all the actual U V equipment is here, so they're actually gonna start on that if we want that. Let's see ultra bio uh, treatment of the wastewater effluent that. Is the last phase of treatment before it goes to river. Um, that's gonna happen now because it'll be almost impossible in. November, December, when it's the wet season and we're treating a lot of rainwater. So their uh, parametrics is helping um, construction manage that, so team meetings are Tuesdays and they have one. Everything is current, there's, everything is current on their questions, our questions, and everything's moving forward. Um, we did receive notice today, the twenty twenty three parks capital and open space grant application from a former park bank stabilization. It was not selected, there's more. So. Good news, that makes, that's that makes, there's more good news in here, so we'll have to figure that out at some point. I'm known, I'm gonna guess. Obviously go around next year, because we have plenty to do this year anyway. Uh, some of our projects, you all are aware, King County has started their coal replacement project. So thirty day notice, August fifteenth is their deadline to reopen. There will be single lane closures once it's reopened. Uh, as far as I have heard from the county, it will still be in construction, but the road will be parent and operable. But they are still going to have construction after the month closure, just to tip. Um, and then we did, we have moved, I don't know when the last time anybody saw the rec center prior to preschool, uh, but. I mean, I'm pretty happy with it. The staff, we were just chatting, it's, it's actually functioning very well with eleven people stuffed into the under three thousand square feet. So, uh. We haven't killed each other yet. It's in two days, so there you go.
Well, Director Lencowski, you have eleven people plus on the other side of it, you have what, another six or seven?
Mondays and Fridays are busy, yes, because yes, we have the operations group on the lower half. So one of the crew leads with their group and uh, summer helper, and then the Monday group, the Friday group, Monday guys are there. Uh, but yes, it's, it's going well. Uh. It has laid out, Benny didn't lay out, but the pieces and parts we had, it's, it's quite high functioning. I, I mean, we're all right now, like. Boy, this couldn't have worked out better. Like, Larissa's like, I'll be wanting back in the old.
I.
Old Town is nice, again, two days, it's fine.
I love seeing it set up. I didn't know how you guys did that. It looks really good. Of course, you know, I'm partial to that building. It's weird to not see an A B C rub on the floor, but whatever.
Right.
Um, so I was gonna ask, did you get any feedback about why we didn't get the award? I know sometimes it's just simple that there's a better. Project.
It's Jack came in, I was Gavin Ford to me, I'm like, four ten, right, forty one.
Okay, because sometimes you get a little feedback at some point of like, oh, you did this.
With numbers on company requested and knowledge they had in pool, it's a big difference, so. Um, next slide. I'm sorry, question on that. So the good news portion of the union's show, um, the conservation futures grants in the middle, we were selected for coming. That is not official till November. Um, you, some of you may have recalled, if you haven't, they were talking about a fifty percent match. And then possibly rolling that back to twenty five percent. So they took it upon themselves based on funding uh, as available. And I don't know if this applied to everybody, I, I would assume it did, but I don't know. So they just rolled it back. We are responsible for twenty five percent of our requests. They are gonna cover the difference, so we. We originally asked for one point eight total, that included seven hundred twenty eight thousand of our cash, two hundred and eight thousand of. Allocated space that we purchased on the property previous. Um, and then they would have been on the hook for nine hundred and thirty seven thousand. Could try to participate in purchasing some property adjacent to the two green law scheme. So with the new map and the approval, which will be till November, um, we're only in for two hundred and sixty cash and there in for one point four. That means nothing if we can't make a good P S L. Property owner, because again, condemnation is not allowed in this process, so. Um, and it's all standard purchase policy, air market, any kind of stuff, so. We'll see. It's great news that we, I don't know when the last time we had conservation features, but maybe for some pieces adjacent to the trail.
Yeah, and they, they've been really small, like.
Twenty six thousand.
Yeah.
So that's um, what you do. Questions, I'm sure.
Councilor Schaefer.
Um, so does it, does this apply to any of the adjacent properties for a particular one or?
We picked, uh, there was another table, so there were the three lots shown listed for sure. And then potentially getting easement on backs of lots that back the way, that's kind of a northeast edge. Um, so yeah. Those are it. Now they're very flexible on if something adjacent needs to be expanded into, like, let's say, one of those has one to participate, and maybe somebody else does it's adjacent. They're, they're pretty flexible.
That was, that is where.
But it's conservation futures, right? We presented all night trails. And that's kind of it.
Uh, one thing that they also, I had gotten an email from my recreation group. That also included um, site stabilization, we need some of the funds for site stabilization, not just the property purchase. So I thought that was pretty cool that. Um, especially if it got applied to the lot that we already own, it's part of that funding. Could we use some of the precise stabilization, are there things that we need to do to that property that would? I don't know what exactly site stabilization includes, but maybe some temporary.
Engineer name would say we have nothing to stabilize, but again, preparation for expansion of, you know, temporary parking or something like that.
Anyway.
Good news, very confusing, because Ben's like, the numbers don't match all the way, but this is what she said, and so. So it's twenty five percent.
Councilor Schaefer, is there a little fun question?
Yeah, I hope you all. The, so Stephen, in your opinion, what, what's kind of the next step here as far as? Talking through the problem?
Yeah, I think what we're gonna do is maybe go into the next session, the next meeting, talk about next step.
Okay.
It's our daily timing hour.
Yeah.
Okay.
Good question, but I didn't. Uh, anything else on that good news? I'm gonna go to one more thing I think is good news. Next slide. Uh, so we all are aware of the fall and the multitude of complaints and. Absolute one hundred percent plus use of the parking lot at the ball field. So I kind of thought something with snow, quality value soccer, the U six and eights are the ones who play on the little grass. Part of the outfield at Bill three, you know, they believe in one of the heaviest generators of trips. Because someone will bring the kid, then the other parent will show up, and then grandparents will show up, right? That's. Kids between the six and U eight are still sweet and happy, and you wanna watch them. When they get older, it's different, but. Um, so that generates a lot. So uh, Shar is our contact at S M D Y C. Kind of dreamed this up, then he got some images with our drone and then did some layouts for us, um. Talk to them. They are completely amenable, one, to removing that use to salvage sanity at the fields. They were gonna just go straight to still water. But there, they went, I asked them to take a look, what do you think? Uh, she went out this weekend, they love it. They, they still wanna try to use still water and try to use this. But talk to Cynthia too, since it's grass and it's new. We don't have any rate set. We could just do a trial and use the grass rates at Big Rock. We try to use something here for the year, see how it goes. Um. It's not developed heavily yet with houses, so there's not gonna be a significant amount of complaints. You have, you know, not a ton of parking seventeen, eight. On adjacency, we also own the part of the parcel that is just off the screen, the bottom right on each of those, so there is more street parking. There's obviously more street parking adjacent to the temporary slum pond, which is a separate parcel, but you know, trying to bait, we have a point five spots. Uh, city ride away spots adjacent to the park. And that's the twenty two, but I know some people like twenty two feet, but twenty two feet doesn't matter. Because then we have point technically, right? So try to, try to be creative.
Can you board a song on this?
I can, so I'm gonna rock this, on the lower picture. Right, Big Rock is to your south. This is the entrance road into Toll Brothers. We all are the village subdivision, where we have the two acre park and then the one acre seat, like both city parks. So this is west of two seventy fifth.
Okay.
And Big Rock, okay.
You're building houses, it's phase three.
Yeah, phase three.
Yeah, okay, that helps a lot. Yeah, I've only been through there a few times, so that's.
Yeah, you should go check it out. The parks are, are done. They're doing a little heat up work as they're supposed to, but. They're in great shape. They have had the handholds to the wall, like the grass is great, the covers are up, it looks amazing. Um, we have way more to do with signage and naming, but.
Sweet though, question itself, no?
Well, yeah, it was just more around the um. But just if, if you didn't move forward with this plan, and sometimes there's equipment storage on site, the other one was if you would. Start these fields or they reduce cone setups, and so it'd be the temporary where they drop the cones, they do the measurement.
Yeah.
I should try to figure in terms of overhead from the city in terms of engagement and then.
Very low, because it's, at this age, it's chalk. And coaches bring the guns. So there's no equipment storage. It comes and goes, and they, remember, they only are, uh, whenever they want to start in August, they're covered. Insurance, August one. Some people practice, some people don't. You might have, you know, a bunch of normal health coaches who start. Uh, others tend to be halfway, and then. Uh, others tend to be halfway, and then the littles, the U six, eight, they only play the. Two week, two games a week for five weeks for ten games, so they're done by like the middle of October. So it's not a huge, you know, draw, it's not a huge, I don't think it's a big ask if they're gonna split this up two with. Stillwater and try this out, see how it goes, and again, just to try to relieve Big Rock, and we haven't met with football or soccer all yet, I just reached out to shop this. We have football, we have cheer, we have soccer, and it's packed. Don't forget the crossfield play that I'm here for, so.
Oh, Mayor, then Councilor, not, no.
I just wanna say, um, thank you, public work staff, for being creative on this, um, years ago when. There was the park envisioning, there were a lot of questions of whether or not that area could even be used for, for kids sports. Uh, the argument was, yes, it can, you know, we'll see what happens as, as time comes, and. This shows, this is a great pilot project, um, so I really appreciate the creativity, um, and also moving some of that, um, congestion away from Big Rock, I think has kind of had a big benefit. Uh, to the families that are, that are out there as well.
Last year was the wildest. Crazy, I mean, and as a parent, as a coach of little kids, you want the parents close, and there's so much for them to do with either themselves or their siblings, like. It's a great space, so we're. We don't have anything in. Fee or code, S N U L I S A is amenable to, like, the pilot of trying it on this Big Rock grade for ball field, for Field Dream. You guys are happy, we can try this year, report back, and then formalize it in the feedback this century, it works.
Yeah, so just, uh, to follow up on what you said, one of my concerns when this was put on is that, um. A lot of these over the vault grass field pad. The big ones, and I think those ended up getting very fully, um, covered with soil and grass.
Yeah, you'll notice one top left.
Just that one.
Just the one, and that's been raided there.
Okay, so that's not an issue that's safe, okay, and then. The, my actual question that I raised my hand for was, I know that age group. People are gonna have to go to the back.
Yeah.
Maybe a quarter, okay.
Yes, that's, uh. We actually, so we have one now rear of the city, it's in the barn.
Yeah.
And we are needing to get one up there.
Okay, cool, and that park is getting drier, we are, I go there all the time, and it's just, I love seeing the families enjoying it, and it's really exciting. So I just want to. And I can vouch for that, I've seen other kids find it.
I thought that, so I just wanted to thank you as well, I'm so glad that that's getting worked on, because it was, yeah, it was really nuts last year, um, and I'm glad you're, you're still gonna talk to some of the other groups, I think one of the main things that we saw when we were up there was. Like cheer being on the sidewalk, so the people who, you know, walk over and wanna just walk the, you know, the loop while their kids practicing, couldn't do so without getting an arm in the face, so. I know there's sometimes a desire to be practicing together, but if there's anywhere else, but I know that can be tricky, so I appreciate you walking that walk and trying to find solutions.
Yeah, I don't know how much of that helpful curve tipped this year, but it will certainly be a point of discussion with the football group and issue, so.
I, I did hear that there are significantly more registrations for cheer this year, so, um.
And again, that's gonna give us, they may do, start bringing their own space. Um, and a great place to do is, Jerry, I liked, they discovered an area under the, you know, basketball court.
So it's still water.
Yeah. So, yeah.
Alright, great.
So yeah, sorry for the long winded, but we have a lot of stuff to share, I want, we wanted to certainly get some input on this, since it's. I think great opportunity to try something in a short amount of time, you know, so.
Right, next slide, um, just really quickly, um. Uh, Director Lanzewski mentioned they had City Hall recarpeted, I wanted to quickly thank public works for the minimal disruption, and it got done quickly. And also thank you to City Hall staff, we created a City Hall theater meeting, because recarpeting was at the same time as utility shut off. And people wanting to come in for their plans, so all of City Hall moved in here. And while, uh, the recarpeting, I never think it was very flexible, so thank you to all of them, uh.
And to add to that, like. I T John, and then we have a new, you know, relationship, the guy's been bending over backwards, doing a great job. Setting people up here, I mean, I don't know if you guys are having any access issues now, but things are. Like, super smooth, you know, where our access point, internet, that thing's working out really well, um. So they're, they're certainly doing a great job to support, you know, the city.
And then, uh, additional thank you to, uh, the engineer group who figured out a way to get Rita into. City Hall and Jason into, uh, the rec center, so the Rose Room now is open again, and we can. Uh, have that back for rentals, I still have a couple in my. Little office down there to move back to City Hall, but we'll be able to, um, rent the Rose Room again. And then we got to the COF date for Economic Development and Tourism Grant applications. Was on July fifteenth, we got two applications, I'll be sending that out to the Senate Committee tomorrow. Uh, we got one from OXPO and one from D O V. And then I have a final topic, um, uh, over the next two slides. So fence decoration is in the right of way, um, so the first slide is kind of a timeline of some of the communications that, uh, the city. Received May, June, and July. Um, so an issue has come up specifically with the fence at Valley in Maine. Um, prior to Pride, the month before Pride. We started getting quite a bit of, um, I don't know what quite a bit looks like in the city, July, I don't, I haven't been here long enough, but we got. Several, um, email communications from residents and the public about. Decorations in the right of way, it seemed pretty specific to the Pride flag, given the communication, so. May third, we got a public complaint requesting code enforcement for the banner on the fence. Uh, that individual went through multiple emails with them explaining that our code didn't specifically prohibit decoration in our. So our code is very specific around signs and banners, but there's a gray area, um. They, we had some follow up communication with that individual, asking if any member of the public couldn't disrupt decorations without any issue on that fence, so. Things, and to some degree, kind of, um, asking the city if that particular fence was fair game for anything at all. Uh, May seventh, we got public inquiries from a different resident regarding fence decorations in the right of way. That email string went on for days, um, we reiterated to that person that our code was somewhat silent on the fence, um. The issue came up again on July fifth regarding the P I W flag and displays, um. Of the P W, P O W flag, and the American flag. We got a different public inquiry on May twenty second with. The language, I'm curious how the city continues to allow the gay pride flag to stay up, so again, prior to Pride. Um. You know, specific questions about the ribbon display on the Valley and Main fence. Uh, July fifth, certain council members got additional correspondence around glass art and banners on fencing. And then July tenth, we got, uh, in person inquiry, city hall about decorations in the fence, as well as an anonymous phone call about decorations in the fence. Our position, um, which we shared with some council members, the app is, um, and, uh, Director Thomas has met with Daniel Kenny, our city attorney. Our code is silent and somewhat gray specifically on art installations in the right of way, so we need to do some policy work. And that's on the planning calendar for the August fifteenth, um. Uh, council meetings, we're, we're working the city attorney, we're gonna bring policy to council, next slide. However, in the interim. Um, and since receiving these emails, if anybody who's driven has that corner. Um, we now have a proliferation of material on that fence, so today we have a new flag, one that frankly I've never seen before. Um, on the fence. And it's one, one of the flags that was waived, it's kind of capital six, um. Events, and there was a previous flag that was, uh, an American flag zip tied with a, uh, metal pole. So we've gotten to the point from an engineering and protection of city property standpoint where we need to address that. Um, I have spoken to the person who, the individual who facilitated the ribbon, um, art installation. Informed them that we were at a place where it is likely either by policy or just by kind of an emergency situation that we're in right now, where we have to take everything. And we're at that place, that fence cannot support, um, and Steve, uh, helped me with the language, it's what, it's when, or is it the death or?
So yeah, when that fence is a river, but then we have, it wasn't designed to hold a heavy load, so we need to do some assessing, like, it might be able to. But we have no idea about going out there, checking an installation, pole depth, diameters. Is it embedded in gravel, is it embedded in concrete, how close it is to the back of the retaining wall, how tall is the retaining wall, how deep are the penetrations adjacent to the retaining wall, so there's a lot there that. I don't want to fall over, you know, make the wall fall over, adjacent to the sidewalk, we can cause problems that way.
For two.
So we will do some, you know, we have to recommend, like, hey, take this stuff off, we'll get you an assessment, and then, you know, your rubber. Policies figured out, but that's where we're gonna add on that.
Yeah, and I would say at this point, with the community interest that we've received and the public interest. At this point, that particular fence seems to be the wild west, and we can't sustain more people going to that fence, but anymore and more upon it, we're creating. Um, and really quickly, I'll just come to the last point, and we've talked to council, in order to be content neutral at this point, um, we need to take everything off the right of way. And then for the things that code covers, banners, signs. Um, we'll ask those, um, people that currently have banners and signs to either get permitted, where they put up a sign and don't currently have a permit. Or reapply their permit, this though, in order to. Um, be content neutral and legal, we need to take everything there. That means assignment, that means the ball field signs, everything needs to be taken down, we'll work with the individual. Uh, people that put up banners and signs to reapply and get the proper permit to have signage in the right of way. So that's where we are.
So, I mean, I did want to share with council that overnight, um, a banner that is closely associated with Christian nationalism, white supremacy. Um, very anti LGBTQ focused organization is the flag that went up already. Um, and that hate does not belong in our community, we can accept all viewpoints, but when you publicly. Put up flags that are declaring hate and exclusion of members of our community, it is harmful, not just to those that identify, but to those family members and friends. That are part of that community, and as you can see, this appears pretty deliberate, um, in this process. Uh, which is, uh, really disturbing, uh, for our community, after all the work, uh, that our community has done coming together over the past several years. To be an inclusive community, a welcoming community, and accept those that are different from us in our community. Uh, so it's, um, there's a lot of people that are really hurting over what's been going on. Um, there's been personal attacks against individuals in our community over this. Um, and it's not, not a good look for the city, um, the community as a whole either. Um, so I did want to also put that out there, because it's been, um, very difficult for individuals. As well as it's costing the city thousands and thousands of dollars to prove a political point, uh, which is disappointing.
Um, we're low on time, so just a quick stop, should we continue this at council, or do you just want to take a few more minutes to wrap up? With the question, yeah, sure, I mean, I, I don't think there's anything more to add, or Lanzewski, there's more to add at this point.
No, we'll work on fitting an assessment in, I, I mean, we get as built so, I just. Installations of utility, but. We know where the fence is, as far as property, I have no idea, so they're, you know, twelve inch depth, and then suppose, because they're minimum, and just we're supposed to be protected, or. Are they twenty four, and can already hold wind, so, you know, because you can design those for slots too, to be in. Product gets that already installed, which is same thing as, you know, the wind push inside this, so. We just need to get in there and take a look at ASAP.
Councilor Shaker, you have a question or a comment?
Uh, both, uh, here's my man, uh, anyway, so is this, is this from City Park?
It is.
Okay, and it's a city owned fence.
It is.
Okay, so I guess that may simplify states a bit in some, some ways, but you know, I, I just. I understand that, that you have, you know, conflicting statements going up there, and I also understand exactly what you said. That, that, you know, some of those statements are meant to be inclusive and positive, and some are really just, just hate, uh, uh. Sentos and have no business in our community, however. Uh, this may be one of those situations where, you know, that it's. Uh, the solution is just to not allow anything on there, uh, at, at all, which, uh, I agree, is a shame, but with, you know, with, with freedom of speech, freedom of expression, uh. I don't think we can allow one, but not yet, uh, so with that in mind. Uh, to me, it sounds like, you know, doing a, a wind load assessment is probably not the path we wanna go, and the path we wanna go is, you know, removing everything.
Yeah, so between now and August fifteenth, this is just for the city on a clean slate. City administration, like myself, Director Lanzewski, Director Thomas, we're not creating a policy, that's for council, that will come on the fifteenth. So it'll be up to you all to debate, do you create, you know, one fence of the public form, do you? Don't do anything, um, this is just, we have to take everything down, we have to put the city at a clean slate. And then figure out on the fifteenth, by policy, what permitting of the right of way fence seems like.
Councilor Shaker? Yeah, I, I was just actually gonna respond, just to clarify something you said, just to make sure that there's awareness in the rooms. Because I think you said this, Cynthia, this will apply to all public, right, so, so it will affect the athletic posts, things, the sport, so there is gonna be some shared. Pain in the community as the result of sort of a couple of actors, which is unfortunate. Um, but just want to make sure, because it's not gonna just be this one fence, it'll be ball fencing in the city, and, and it would end up a broader discussion around. Just the banner ball policies and all the other methods of communication, and, you know, it's an unfortunate consequence of. Of sort of the, well, I don't even say minority, majority, but, but it is a. Essentially a couple of, you know, offensive and, and differentiating of, of paintings in terms of that we'll have to reconcile them. Ultimately, the long term might be, yeah, they're writing a type of speech that's allowed to very mutual comment.
Councilor Shaker? Yeah, one thing that just popped into my mind about, you know, Big Rock Golf Field, this, I don't know which leagues have agreements, but I, I think as part of some sponsorship programs. Or the nonprofits, there's been signage on. And so I, I don't know how that conversation will happen, but I just wanted to mention that, that there could be questions about, well. You know, we agreed to hang these, yeah, for certain time periods, so I don't know.
They, 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 yeah, well, of course, but, yeah. And, and this is another unfortunate, um, issue of, uh, the. How this has all, uh, occurred in such a short period of time, um, I, I will say that staff have this on the agenda to address in October, um, and. Um. The people that contacted the city were well aware of this, and chose to escalate. Um, so this is, yes, they, they were fully aware, um, and. That's one of the things that makes this even more disappointing, um, this conversation that I had as well, made it clear that this is also gonna. You know, if we have to go this route, it's going to also impact, uh, the sponsors and our, our kids' sports events, and, uh. That was not a concern, uh, which was really disappointing, uh, to me, um, that. This was more important than the support of our kids' sports teams and the support of people within our community.
So we'll be working with, um, really quickly, we'll be working with the nonprofits and the businesses to take down things. And then where code currently allows permit, like, some of the signs are permitted, signs that our code is clear on, we'll work with them to reapply. Um, and then on the fifteenth, we'll bring back to council. Councilor Shaker?
Oh, yeah, I think it's unfortunate we've gotten this situation, um, but I agree with the plan to, like, uh. It's all, that is down, and then reassess the situation on the pockets.
Yeah, that's gonna include, just so everyone knows, um, the red, white, and blue bunting that's on the. The fences, um, you know, the little Fourth of July things, all that has to come down, so we basically have to create a clean slate for the city.
That's what you mean by clean slate is?
Everything, yeah, yeah, so then I would just say really quickly, I'm assuming it's similar to when we've enforced sandwich board signs, things like that, that they get collected for up to City Hall. And a notice goes out and say, please come collect them, and, you know.
And just.
Your, your Thomas was out.
Because April times were being placed within our A B A transition areas, so we went out, took photos, marked them, click, you know. Associated Business or, or developer, so those others are going out, and then tonight after this meeting, I will be going and seeking again for the fourth time.
So those others are going out and then tonight after this meeting, I will be going and seeking again for the fourth time in a week. We totally grab about five to eight signs at a time. What happens, people are just leaving them out and in other places they're not supposed to go. So we'd already started that clean slate and then this just, you know, became a top priority as well.
Great, that was my last slide.
Okay, what was that, anyone? Well, thank you for all that work on that particular item, um, and for being so responsive with what was going on.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America.
I know some of us received correspondence and.
And to the republic for which it stands, under the umbrella of the Constitution.
It's really unfortunate, I think this is the right way to go though, but, um, yeah, I hope we can work through it in the future.
So it's really unfortunate, I think this is the right way to go though, but, um, yeah, I hope we can work through it in the future.
And I hope that. People remember that flags in general are symbols for various beliefs and things. And the notons could be used as tools or weapons against each other and maybe find an organization or a cause in the community.
And I hope that. People remember that flags in general are symbols for various beliefs and things.
Then you want to put that energy and time into instead of something like this, so.
And the notons could be used as tools or weapons against each other and maybe find an organization or a cause in the community.
Uh, with that, we'll go ahead and journey at seven oh five, maybe take a quick five, five and a minute, I'll be back, thank you.
Then you want to put that energy and time into instead of something like this, so. Uh, with that, we'll go ahead and journey at seven oh five, maybe take a quick five, five and a minute, I'll be back, thank you.
Well, the Tuesday, July 18th, Duval City Council meeting to hear, would you please rise and be in the black. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands under its sole sovereignty. Certainly we will.
Certainly, Mayor Oberlander.
Here.
Mr. Isaacson. Mr. Schaefer. Mayor Lieutenant Henry. Mr. Mercer. Your Mr. Soffler. Your Ms. Atherton.
Here.
Mr. Law. Here.
We have a forum. Under additions and corrections to the agenda, under unfinished business, please add Agenda Bill 23-47, under item number one. And does anybody else have any changes or corrections to the agenda? Seeing none, we have a motion to approve this evening's council agenda. So.
Senator.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Motion passes. With that, we do not have any presentations this evening, so we'll move just straight to members of the audience. It looks like we might have a member on the line, so if you'd like to speak, please go ahead and raise your hand, and you'll have three minutes to speak. Right, it looks like Megan, if you can unmute yourself and provide your name. The floor is on yours. Looks like we can't hear you, so we're working on that.
Yeah.
We're lost. Any questions? Yeah, it's showing us that we can hear you, but we can't hear. Okay. Can hear you now. Or not?
Maybe that'll work. Can you hear me now?
You can.
Okay, I think that was the yes. Hi, Megan Crawford here from Acres of Diamonds, and on behalf of the Duval Chamber, I just wanted to say hello. Thanks for having me today.
Thank you. Not seeing anybody else online, we have no one in the audience. Secretary Tara, did we receive any written comments?
We did not, Mayor.
All right. Then we'll go ahead and move straight to approval of the consent agenda. Someone like to make a motion?
So.
Second. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. All those opposed, please say no. Motion passes. All right, moving on to scheduled items. First up, the mayor's report. Been a while since we've been here with canceled meetings due to holidays, and I was away at the Association of Washington Cities Conference during our last meeting. First of all, I'd like to express appreciation to Mayor Lieutenant Henry, who can only make it for one day, but she did make it over spoken for a day, have a very full day. And I know got a lot of good information, I'm sure she's going to be reporting on. I will say it was a fantastic conference, close to, I believe, 500 attendees across the state from 281 cities, or representing our 281 cities. Lots of really fantastic sessions and discussion groups. I will say it feels like it's been, was the most connected group in all the years that I've attended AWC conferences, which was really nice. I think people were engaged, excited to be there. There were over 123 newly elected officials that attended, which was a huge number. And so, very thankful for that, and then did want to share with council that I was elected vice president of the Association of Washington Cities, so it's going to be a fun and juicy year. That also means I don't attend too many sessions with the conferences. So, I will, I think Mayor Lieutenant, I would continue to encourage you to go, even if it's for only a day for the events that they had. Did want to let folks know, you didn't see in your email, the Association of Washington Cities Budget Workshop is August 10th and 11th in Lubbock. It's attended by elected officials, staff, finance people, city administrators, department directors, et cetera. And it really is a very very informative training, so if you have the opportunity, I highly encourage you to go. Doesn't hurt that it's in a great setting. It's usually, I can't remember if it's at Bavarian Lodge this year or not, but that's usually where it is, so it's central and located to everything for those off-hours as well. And also in June, we had a meeting with, our quarterly meeting with Councilmember Perry and the cities of San Fong Valley, the tribes and the Stone Island Transit with King County Metro, and did want to just reiterate, we will get them on for presentation at council in early fall, but the route cuts that they have made and are making are directly the result of lack of staffing. So, they do fully expect those routes to come back when they can fulfill the staffing obligation. So, I know there's been assumptions that they are permanent, it is not permanent, and the future expansion in service is still is still private, so that is still on the plan for King County Metro to get expanded service out in Duval. But they, they have to put their drivers where the people are, and people are getting stranded on more heavily used routes, so it was critical for them to ship their drivers, which is unfortunate. At the same time, our ridership has been extremely low, so it makes financial sense and sense to those riders that depend on the system to get to and from every day. And Summer Stage picked up this week, or last week, so it's a good crowd, so I have some members here. It was an excellent band, and this Tuesday, we have a country music performer lined up. Food trucks will be there, so feel free to try it out. They're playing around with new location for the stage in Beer Garden, so that hopefully people aren't in the blaring sun as much. I think it worked out well, Beer Garden is a little too big, so they're going to compact that this week and make more room for spectators that don't want to participate in Beer Garden. I wanted to also note that Acres of Diamonds has their annual fundraiser on September 23rd in Bellevue. Got an email from the executive director asking Duval to host a table, so if you're interested in attending, I think we'd have 10 seats, let me know so that I can get that booked, and we can compete actually with the city of Woodville this year on making sure that we have at least a full table. And next up, I just wanted to have, share a really big kudos for Luke, our effort, our new emergency management coordinator, and Jason Brand in particular. They haven't been here very long, but they're making a huge impact. Case in point is, the coordination that they worked on with our city administrator and public works director leading up to the 4th of July, in constant communication and sharing information with the public. And then in particular, last week, Luke touched on it a little bit, but when the utility pole caught fire at a not good spot in the city of Duval. For folks that weren't here, most of the cell phone communications on Diamonds, all power from the city of Duval right now. Cindy and I were trying to talk, we couldn't keep a signal. We had to drive out of town through the stop red lights just to meet and coordinate, and try and reach everyone else in the city. And we were able to get it done, our staff responded really, really well, PD assisted with that effort. But one of the things that highlighted is something that the city hasn't had in the past, and I wanted to give a big shout out to Luke for kudos, and that's our central responders, our central function employees and elected officials having access to the Department of Homeland Security gets cards and wireless priority service for our cell phones. Those are two programs that when these situations happen again, we will be able to get through despite what's happening with our system. And we were really lucky, I think, time of day conditions, that this fire didn't happen in August, that it was noticed and was able to be put out quickly, but we could have been in a lot more situation. And if we didn't have communications for a bigger situation, the city would have been in having some serious challenges with our emergency management operations. And so, I share that to say that, you know, despite all the work that I know that both Luke and Jason are doing behind the scenes, these are critical components of having a well-prepared city. And Luke's got it done, within 24 hours of us having that conversation, the cars were ordered and on the way. So I can't tell you what it means to have, for our city and our staff, to have a professional, full-time professional emergency person at the helm there, as well as Jason with his experience in communications. So, things could have been different last week, we were very lucky, but I think it's also yet another wake-up call of why the work we're doing, why the funding of these, these positions are planned, and making sure that we're prepared is so important for our community. And with that, that's the end of my report. I'm getting anything questions? Great. And, Cindy, you're in a straight right now, did you have anything else?
I don't think so, we've got a robust city industry update, so we'll, more to come next month.
For the public that was not at the committee in the hole, or that's watching this video, the city of Manhattan extra times, so the city administrator provided the whole report during the lead the whole, which is the meeting directly preceding this. Now to council committee and ad hoc committee reports. Mayor Lieutenant Henry.
Yeah, I, you know, it's funny that I just got back from vacation, and I'm like, oh yeah, you know, me. Not a meeting since, so I was able to go for one day, but it was impactful. But surprisingly, I've accessed all the materials, even on the days I didn't go, so I'm in the process of downloading those via OneDrive, and then I'll share that. I think I had sent you all, the day I was there, the link to this, some of the links. Because one of the things I was able to take was this short course on planning, which I had not had a chance to do before. What else did I do? I went to the general session, Mayor carried the flag for Duval, which was great. There was the meeting, the state's energy efficiency requirements, and kind of talking about your role as elected officials and all that, or what the role that cities have in that as well. Surviving the crisis was Megan Black, I think, from City of Bellevue, and it was interesting to hear her perspectives on, you know, when something really crazy happens, and it sounds like it did when I was gone, you know, how to respond, how to deal with that stuff. So, I'll be able to download all the materials. I just didn't get all the way before I had to leave on my trip. And other than that, I think my only other thing I would ask, I don't know if anyone, or maybe not to put Councilwoman Atherton on the spot, like if you had secured any dates for farmer's market, council chats, or that's something I haven't done, I was thinking the summer concerts, you know, something we could, I could get a little yard sign, okay. But I could get a little yard sign, you can have some lawn chairs, just under a quorum of council members, and wanted to kind of puddle in one spot and just say council chat, you know, at a location that the community's gathering, and put ourselves on the spot. Maybe somewhere near the beer garden, I'm kidding, I'm just kidding. Anyways, so yeah, I just wanted to follow up with that, if you guys have spots. There's no dates, but if you want something to happen, feel free to schedule it and try to rope in another council member or two, and let us all know what's going on and stuff. That's it.
All right, thank you. Councilwoman Zeppl.
Yeah, you know, City of Carnation got their big parade about a week or two going. I was looking at their council, city council website, and you know what they do to avoid, well, in case, they had all these signs up saying, there may be three or more people at the what was it they were saying, there may be a city council meeting, or something to that effect, you know what I mean? Remember, did you see any of that? So it kind of got around the open meeting requirements of having three or fewer people. Because that's what Duval can do.
Yeah.
You know, so, so like, Duval Day is parade, we can only have three people, three council members, otherwise you're down to call. Do you?
Oh, you don't. Go ahead. I'm just gonna say, so when they notice those, like, oh, there's going to be more than a quorum at the chamber meeting, or something like that, but they'll usually then say, but no business is expected to be conducted, so we can notice it and have a quorum if we agree to not discuss business, or is that the stipulation? Because if you are going to discuss business, there needs to be an agenda, there needs to be a, probably a place for public comment, or some accessibility thing, but you can get together at social events and notice it, that we're going to be there, and we're not going to talk about city stuff.
And in, in general, it's not uncommon at those large city events for everyone to run into each other. In my experience, there's not a lot of city business going on at Duval today, it's for, for the July information. So the risk is minimal, but for appearances sake, you know, if council chats, so Mayor Lieutenant gets noticed that there's going to be four people, we just need the proper time for the clerk to notice that publicly. And that's totally fine, you can do that. I think historically, it's been trying to keep it to three. It's easier to have a conversation, but it also, you know, makes it so that those people can come to the council chat and not fear that they're being recorded, and then they can have candid conversations that are elected officials do. So, you guys get to do whatever you want.
Yeah, I mean, if more than three people want to come, just let us know, and Secretary Tara will hopefully notice this out.
Well, I wasn't specifically diving out the council chats, but I mean, some of the events that happened in Duval.
Yeah.
Summer Stage. The whole place.
Councilwoman Atherton? Yeah, just for my, oh, are we in council reports, or are we on?
I think we kind of skipped the, I don't think we have any ad hoc committees.
I totally, so yeah. Yeah, I just want to bring up that I attended Eastside Transportation Partnership, well, virtually, was last week, and it was a presentation for Metro, and they did focus a bit on some of the more rural areas. And we're really promoting van pools, and turns out it was only temporarily that they reduced it to only requiring three van pool members to put together a van pool, which was, I guess, you know, it kind of exploded the program, but we got an email after our meeting that, no, they changed, it's back to five, so you need five members to qualify for a van pool. But, I mean, I think it's a great option, potentially, and I don't know if that's something that we could communicate again, and just remind people about the van pool program, and I don't know how you can connect people might not know, you know, I don't know how, you know, we could, if that's something that we could facilitate even, to try to help people put together van pools, or maybe Metro already has kind of a a way to do that, but anyway, I can forward out the presentation that we were given at that meeting.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right. Seeing then, we'll move straight to unfinished business with the wastewater treatment plant expansion, and expansion project. And I work through the basement. With Director Meneszewski.
Hey, hi, good evening, mayor staff, Citizens Council, Steve Meneszewski, Public Works. Then your packet is, as promised, the wastewater treatment plant headworks change order project. So, the need of the matter, of course, is obviously cost Our estimate from our engineer record parametrics was between $940 and $1,050,050. So it is on the low end. This all can be achieved with the contractor on site. The only cost in not recognizing here is any additional construction management we won't expect from the parametrics. We do have a little bit of management reserve. We, I think, then I spoke right before the meeting, too. I think the parametrics is already on site, it's part of the work that's going to be happening, so we don't really expect additional construction management cost per se, maybe some hours here and there, but as far as overall, we're already here, it's more work that's going on. It's adding to some of the construction days, but they're going to be on and off for some of the construction days, too, just because of material. So, I'm not worried about the CM part of the costs, so this is the hard cost to get purchased and installed. If you do not recall what it is, it is the T-influent screening device. Right now, we have a vertical element, it's called a travel fan screen. It has a lot of vertical components that have broken twice to the tune of $50,000 recently to fix. Without it, the warranty does not exist on our NBR, environmental, or screen. So, two-millimeter van screen, this is it, the van screen would stay as backup, so we do have that option going forward, and this is a much higher capacity, so it serves now, it'll service down the road. And it is what we already had programmed as a couple group for wastewater, and we talked about a lot back, and adding it. So that is all finalized. Moving forward with the contract and the change order, we get this ordered tomorrow, and, you know, in the works, it's a, it's got a pretty substantial lead time still. I don't think this would go until after March, just by ordering physical material, and then doing work in the ground, but that's what we have here. For council's consideration, funding is available. There are any concerns on staff side that it needed to happen, whether it's now or soon, and again, this should happen just to maintain the warranty for our new NBRs that are coming in, so. Any questions? And.
Councilwoman Reddick, you want to start with the beginning?
I move to approve Agenda Bill 2344, authorizing change order 01, could be mapped out to $955,204.33. The contract 2266 with the clure, and some incorporated for the 2022 wastewater treatment.
Second. Great. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. All those opposed, please say no. Motion passes. Moving on to Agenda Bill 23-47. The 2022 police station remodel change order number one.
Thank you, council, mayor, citizens staff, again, Steve Meneszewski. Share screen, sorry for the late addition on this. Small contractors, sometimes we've been playing a lot back and forth when getting some file documentation numbers, so this project originally is $144,518.89. There was a 10% management reserve, which put our authority, actually, at like $157.73. And without tax, we're within our wherefall, but I don't want to play any sort of funny games like that, but with tax, we are looking to need $169,810.97. That's $12,037.92 over what we had authority for. And I apologize, I thought I had some notes in here for you all. So, the, I'll just read over the change order items, so the kitchen itself is $21,558 without tax. These numbers are left without tax. About the electrical service, so we had to change the panel workout. The range that was in the kitchen existing did not have electrical connection capabilities for a VM circuit, so we added that at this time, which took in electrician, as well as some sheetrock work and conduit. So that was $2,250. The paint color that was originally specified did not make cheese liking, even though they did a bunch of swatches, once like a whole wall instead of some paint swatches. So, we have that paint, and it'll be going in the wastewater treatment right now. So there's that, the underfloor was to be replaced throughout the entire facility, they replaced it all in the kitchen, and then not the hallways. And the work we did exposed and changed some stuff out in the ladies locker room and the holding cell area. And the rest of it, as it was pulled up, various building officials did not need to be put down, so they replaced all the flooring everywhere, but did not replace all the subfloor set $115, $150 credit back. They added some insulation in the areas that were not expected to have any added, so there was no complete block for road damage. So $23,225 without tax, $25,292 with tax, for a total project of $169,810. Not having time today, or honestly, a clear understanding of where the funds would come from. I left it to the mid-buy and options, sorry. For the, the contract pool delta. So, $25,000 and change over the original, because we did drain the kitchen too. I believe I had noted. And come out with one old general fund, contingency fund zero two, strategic funds. And I'm really, that's, you know, for us to figure out that we will go through a mid-buy adjustment, and could talk about the actual funds in use there. Questions?
Do we need to wait until we go ahead first? Can we take action on this now, so we can get the work?
No, we don't need to wait as long as we can know, we need to just figure out where the remaining funds are going to come from. Like, we have money to pay, we just have to earmark what the money's going to pay for. So, and the work is done. We want to build it out, and there.
Yeah, that's right, right, and they can, they can do that work, even if your yard still is filling.
No, so, when we had the meeting in February, you talked about adding the kitchen work, I was hopeful we could fit it in under the 10% management reserve authorized over the contract. We're close, but not there, so I want to make sure it goes forward, the work is all done, and at that time, I said that I needed to come back for an ultimate change order, but so this works, it's done, they're done, and hopefully it closes out, I just, I can't, that's a change.
I thought we had to count.
It's all done, we can process change orders, and a closeout without process leaving me, the way to spend, you know. So it's a little backwards, but we, I may mention that when I brought the kitchen board.
Councilwoman Atherton? Can I just go ahead? Okay, I move to approve Agenda Bill 2347, authorizing approval for the mayor to find change order 01. Project change order on the 2022 police station remodel project contract for a new total of $169,810.92 with original contract and change order authorization included.
Sorry.
Are you, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. All those opposed, please say no. Motion passes. If you all. Moving on to new business, we have a drone policy for discussions, city administrator Nick.
Thank you, Mayor. Council, members of the public watching, Cindy McNabb, the administrator. So, this is the first touch council of a drone policy. So, the city now has a drone in the public works department. It's the only drone we have, so with getting a drone, we need to build some policy around it to identify the appropriate uses and prohibited uses of a drone. Make sure that we have a policy that centers privacy concerns and identifies that anyone who uses the drone will do so in compliance with FAA regulations. So just from a quick presentation perspective for tonight, when I looked to create a drone policy, I went on MRSC, and I also pulled a bunch of drone policies. So, the Tacoma, Seattle, Skidmore County Public Works has a drone policy, San Juan County, San Juan Islands, their Parks Department, Soho County Emergency Management, City of Buckley had a really good one. San Francisco, Eugene, California, Eugene, Oregon, that's where you go. So, in Washington State, there aren't a ton of small jurisdictions that had a policy I could build off of, but obviously Seattle, Tacoma, Everett, some of the big big municipalities have had drones for a long time. And so I kind of took all of that, built a policy that is short enough to meet the limited uses that we have right now for a drone, but also contains all of the essential elements of a drone policy. So the key provisions in the policy that's in your packet are identifying authorized uses or prohibited and permitted and prohibited uses, and so there's, the way I drafted it, is there's a chart in the policy that has kind of by usage, what are the types of activities that we will use a drone for. Policy statements that we will protect privacy when we put the drone up. And in the draft policy that's in the packet, I've identified that for law enforcement purposes, there's some very specific elements of drone policies that are very different than general municipal use, and so we would need to write a specific law enforcement policy if the police department gets a drone. We use Lexible for our policy work in the police department, so very similar to body worn cameras. Lexible has a template drone policy. I don't think there's anything in it really that would. A template drone policy. I don't think um there's anything in it early that would obligate us to bargain with the union in terms of. Working conditions, but there might be. So if um the police department decides to purchase a drone, we'll have kind of a separate process for. Uh, creating a Lexible policy around drone usage for the police department specifically. And then the final piece of kind of consistent draw the policies is making sure that anyone who puts a drone up is a certified pilot. And goes through that certification process. Director Lannishewski has already done that. So anybody operating our drone, I think, Director Lannishewski, how many people do you have? Who've um certified as drone pilots?
So we haven't obtained the section one set of license, but went over review of it. So myself, Ben Sackett, engineer and Gavin Harold. Not that everyone doesn't want to use a lot of time, but Ben is the main driver. Of the device when we need it. Uh, for instance, we, we did a full site inspection and the resolution on the, the video footage of the, you know, for the treatment plant product is insane, right? You know, you're going to worry about who damaged what. Well, we have a now amazing video in the for it of the site prior to two contractors showing you this. At some point, someone says, I didn't do that. And I guess I didn't do that. What do you do? So I mean, we have, it's amazing. Like, yeah, and. So super nice to have, obviously ultra convenience. But you know, it's already been used and worth its thousand dollar value.
So in the packet, it's a pretty short policy. Um, it has. You know, the purpose and scope of our policy, uh policy statement that um. Identifies that, you know, any employee who has an unauthorized use of it would be subject to discipline to making sure there's some teeth to our healthies so that. Our staff don't misuse the equipment. Um, privacy and safety of our residents, businesses and visitors are top priority. Um, identify, you know, specifications, safety, training, privacy. Um, and then there's a table there for authorized use by department. Um, so you know, finance department for disaster and recovery. Um, the P D, I've identified some things for the P D, but again, they would have to have their own separate policy because there's some. Uh, constitutional issues that are usually put into the police department during such policies that I didn't identify in this that are really specific to. Um, that exert surgeon seizure. Um. Taking footage of police chases, things like that, that very specific stuff. Um, but utilities, public works. Recreation and park usage. I included some technology and communication. Um, items like uh video production, community events. Um, so. Like I said, this is just a first touch. Um, if you would take a look, provide me any comments or feedback. Um, I will bring it um to successive uh council meetings uh for uh comment approval and finalization and we get it in place.
Councilor.
Just one quick question, I, you know, I took a little before. The meeting and you obviously. Have a paragraph around privacy, do you see client authority? Is the. Data that's collected, is it in any way subject to public records request and or? You know, is it does it need to be in the language with regard to, you know, subpoena or other things? There's things around the police department, but just to show the public access to the data, I think that would be the only one. That that jumped at me, there was no specific language that would prohibit or put constraints around. Public request with that data. While I expect that to be an outlier, it might be. I think to ask Daniel about just the challenge of that, would you trust?
Yeah, on this part of the, let's see, page is this, the second page, I have a section here on data security. Um, which is to live stream the drone data and then not retain um the data where possible. So. If we keep it, it is subject to public disclosure. So um making sure that if we live stream it or capture images. That we're capturing it for a very defined governmental purpose. Is it the capture and retain it? It would be subject to public disclosure. The public disclosure rules though, in the police departments on retained footage are very different. So again, it's a very unique um set of rules. Police department drone footage, because there, um, it's subject to subpoena, prosecutors can try and get access to it, particularly if it's um in a certain seizure. Um, environment. So this is a little bit different.
And then I would imagine Daniel would concur though, some of the utility um elements are disposable when they, when they. I guess roll into emergency management and then uh security for utility drinking water is one of them. So we, we do intend to use it to inspect tanks. There's, you know, there is visual. Data you can already get from Google and other places, but more finite detail, you know, might be something that is uh turn nefarious. So. We would, we would put those in different folders and make sure they're not disclosable if there's warranted not being schooled.
Councilor Levitt, and then Councilor Sheever.
Is there currently a drone policy for like privacy? Like inside the city?
No. It, it's covered by federal law. There's R C W on it, but we do not have a private citizen drone policy. Some of the municipalities that I looked at have both a internal or. Um, uh employee use policy and policies for residents using drones. And this one's just designed to cover the fact that we now as a city have a drone.
Got it. Yeah, it's interesting because. I only note that because having put a lot of drone contracts into place for building an event type stuff. It's the more robust the policy, just in general, the safer the community. Generally speaking, because you just don't know. I mean, I don't know, I know this is for city use, but it's just worth the broader exercise that like if you were filming an event. Would want to run people through the same safety bases.
Yeah.
That you would require a mirror. Team. You know, so to speak.
Right now, we don't have any. Policy permit or permissions that would allow private resident to film. An event here. We don't have a permit for it. Yeah. This, I think, is probably the first step.
Yeah.
But we probably at some point in the near future will have to do a, a permit process for residents to film.
Yeah, because they're a little bit like, you know, once you hear the, oh, people are like, oh, what's that?
Yeah.
And they'll do that. And then all my friends will do that. And maybe on the festival.
Yeah, I mean, this is.
Inspiring, just put three hundred.
City of Brentford's.
So I'm just saying.
Yeah, and there's really good. I mean, obviously the city of Seattle has an insanely robust process for um citizens getting permits to videotape. Uh, events. Um, so that'll probably be the next step. This is just to cover the fact that we have this piece of equipment. We want to make sure.
Makes sense. Thank you.
Councilor Sheever?
Yeah, yeah, let's get this back to Councilor Murkis' question. I, I guess I'm still not clear on that. So the movie, movie footage we need to part. They need to say for, for any number of reasons. Uh. It's one of that, it may be making sense that security reasons or other, so. I didn't see anywhere in the policy that directed that addressed that. Um. Uh, and it sounds to me like something is, is needed because by default, all that footage. Is subject to, to public request. Uh, and it must, there was an exception to that.
So any, any piece of government information is subject to public disclosure. Um, before we release it, though, we would identify it was exempted from public disclosure. So anything's subject to public request. Um, whether it ultimately gets released through a series of exceptions, right? Like attorney client privilege. Um, deliberative process, utilities, there are a couple, you know, there's. I can't remember how long the list is, there's twenty plus exemptions to public disclosure. So just because we have it, doesn't mean we have to release.
Okay, good. That's good to know. So can, can, can you just add a few words on that? I think that'd be perfect.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'm here for Tom McConner. Yeah, just, um, I mean, drones have been around for a while, so I'm assuming, but this is covered by our basic insurance that we already have. We don't need any special. I was just thinking like, you know, if a drone blends into a telephone pole or something like that, that kind of stuff, not to get into. Um, but is it already in general, drones are covered under the city insurance?
They would be good. Thanks.
Uh, George.
Uh, just a, a. Bit of gratitude for seeing you now. Uh. It's nice to have a policy when I'm the user, but. And it's provided to William House, the expertise. So I very appreciative of that.
And then once I get comments, so the next round of process will be, I'll get comments, um, I'll create a new draft. And then I'll send it to um city attorney Kenny, because I just put it together as a first touch, but he has not reviewed it. So I'm going to do another draft, send it to him and then bring it back.
All right. Any other questions or? We're going to a new business item number two. All right, well, we're going to the utility shut off due to extreme heat for discussion and decision here, or city administrator.
Um, thank you, mayor. So we have two items that are associated with each other, but are different. So I've broken them out. Into two separate topics. Um, so the first one is, we'll read the first, the utility shut off due to extreme heat. And so um effective, and we have a slide that will come up on this. Um, so effective July twenty third. Um, so this is, this is the council meeting that it needed to come to, to effectuate that. So this is. A bit of a pressing issue. Um, city water utilities are prohibited from disconnecting water service due to non payment. For residential users during heat related events. So um this was part of the um. Uh, round of changes in this legislative session. It is specific to the residential user, so it does not cover business. Um, the key provisions, so it applies to um national weather service heat warnings, heat advisory, heat watches. Or similarly related alerts. Um, the statute, um, statutory language is really specific that it's the national weather service. Who triggers um this change. Um, so our obligation here at the city will be to make sure that we're looking. Um, regularly at those national weather service heat advisories. And when one is triggered, if we have any disconnected service or. Uh, a utility shut off that is during that heat uh event, we either must seek. Uh, it's a reasonable attempt to reconnect or cannot disconnect water utility service during a heat event. Um, so the language is um, uh, so applies to national weather service heat warnings. All disconnection notices due to non payment must be amended to inform customers of the ability to reconnect during heat emergencies. So we need to do that right away to change all of our um disconnect notices to include that language. So that's something that our um. Finance department has to do immediately um after tonight, assuming that we pass a new ordinance. Um, all they have to do is whether we pass a new ordinance, so it has to be done. Um, we have to make a reasonable attempt to reconnect services that were discontinued. Um, and it only, this would only apply if the original reason for the disconnection was non payment. So water service was disconnected for a different reason. We would not have to reconnect during a heat advisory. It only implies if the original reason for the disconnection was uh non payment. Of your utility bill. Um, the legislative language says that repayment plans are optional. Um, city attorney Kenny has worked um. Uh, to create the ordinance language that embeds that. Um, our finance director has discretion to create repayment plans. We did not define um specifically what those repayment plans would look like. We didn't want to be locked into a particular method. Um, so the language is written right now that it, the finance director has discretion to um. Uh, put together policy language and adopt a repayment plan structure. Uh, there are rules though associated that if we are going to do repayment plans, it cannot require monthly payments in excess of six percent of the monthly income of a customer. And the repayment plan should be designed to bring the customer current within the next billing cycle or next month. And then um water utilities with more than two thousand five hundred customers have to file an annual report to Commerce. Um, that includes a total number of disconnections that occurred on each day of a national weather service event. So any questions about what the legislative language requires?
Councilor Sheever and then Navlin and Sutcliffe.
And I'm going to have uh state attorney Kenny on here. Um. I, when we, when we answer the questions, interestingly, uh, the state attorney general got a whole host of questions on this. And delivered a memo and half the responses in the attorney general's memo is speech or legal counsel. So. So there's not a lot of established uh policy in line yet on this, though. Uh, we'll, we'll do our best.
Let's see, I, I got a couple of related questions. First, Laura, help, help me out here, because. With our water bills are all paid by the property owners now, is that correct?
I am probably not the best person to answer that question. I'm not in that department and I don't, yeah, I don't think that's.
No, there's not. A renter can plant a builder, okay, I have to change that house uh with no memories, okay. So, so that does complicate things, I think, considerably here as to who can make this request, right? It can be a property owner, probably it can be somebody that's renting that. Uh, can be any arbitrary person that's occupying that property, possibly a squatter. Uh, that can make that request. I mean, you may not have the answers at these, but, but we do have vacant properties in the, in the city. I, you know, I can see. The possibility of, you know, somebody there and, and uh, you know, we have a heat event and they say, hey, come reconnect the water for me. Uh, even along the squatter.
So the attorney general, in answering this question, what is the definition of a residential user? Um, the language in the bill should be given its ordinary meaning, helpful. Um, the purpose of the bill is to protect utility user, the end user in residential settings. If group homes and home healthcare facilities are residential dwellings, this bill would apply and it would be. So this is residential users, dwell, user, dwelling apartments, mobile homes. Um, but there was a question. Um. How does the law find out a permit for the property owner to pay the bill and the tenant may never see the bill and then iterations thereof? Um. And it says, the purpose of the bill is to protect utility users, the end user. The user, whoever is, so a- and the bill is absolutely intended to cover renters as well as property owners.
Okay.
I don't know if that answered your.
Yeah, well, it, it, it actually doesn't, but I'm just. It's more of like, you know, why, you know, why, you know, person that, you know, uh, squatters are becoming fairly tough, right? They, they find an empty property and they move it. Uh, and uh. I would be hesitant to give them any kind of benefits or rights uh at all. Uh, that have to water, you know, their water period on this type of event. So it would be good to know uh that, this may be a question for Daniel.
Um, there's another question in the attorney general memo. If a customer requests to be disconnected but retains. Uh, airage, are they eligible for automatic heat alert reconnection? For example, a vacation property owner. Decides to disconnect when they aren't using the property, but retain the past few bounds. Could they request reconnection when heat alert is issued? And the response is, the session law states a residential user at whose dwelling utility service has been disconnected for lack of payment. So I think it presumes. That you are a legal residential user of the property, not somebody who's squatting.
Yeah, well, that would certainly be one off of those, at least of our bank, at least for now. But uh, it. That was one of the things that kind of jumped out at me is who really has the right to make this, make this request. Hopefully it would be a, you know, a previous renter or current or previous, well, I mean, this current renter or owner of the property.
It is the residential user of the dwelling, in whatever legal form that is, or property owner.
Yeah, I don't know what the. What that means legally, but I, I don't want to dwell on this, so like I said. Yeah, I don't know what the, what that means legally, but I, I don't want to dwell on this, because like I said, it's a one-off type of, uh, type of, type of thing, yeah.
Um, Councilmember Naplin, Soppel and then what?
Yeah, this is super quick. Um, something popped out at me, it says that they need to, they can create a repayment plan, of monthly payments, it seems, but then it says that plan has to bring the customer current in a month. So it's like, that's not really a payment plan if there's one payment. It's aspirational, but, so the, the language is strict in that it has to be capped at six percent.
Okay.
It's aspirational in that the repayment plan should be guided towards bringing the person current that doesn't require it. Is the legislation does not require, one, it doesn't require a repayment plan. Those are options. So we get the discretion to decide if we're going to do a repayment plan, but that policy has to apply universally, whatever we decide to do with it. So the way Daniel and I worked on this is that we wanted to do the ordinance changes that have to be done by July twenty-third to get this, you know, in effect. But the policy work of whether or not we would do repayment plans, that part of it isn't done, what those repayment plans are like. Um, but the part around bringing someone current in the next billing cycle or month is more aspirational language than it is required language.
Do we already offer repayment plans for people so that they can, okay.
Yeah, that is actually part of, we, we already have a process for that. Probably what we would do is take the existing policy and go and make it, you know, specific to heat advisory. That's more or less what the ordinance changes tonight do.
Okay.
Um, Councilmember Soppel?
Yeah, well, so what would the city do for a customer whose water was disconnected due to nonpayment, it all then said, hey, I remember, I remember this, uh, heat wave, please connect my water backup, and the city does. And the heat wave passes over and it's, uh, you know, it's no longer an emergency. What does the city do to disconnect the water at that point or continue supplying water?
So when the heat advisory passes, we can do a couple of things. We can do an optional repayment plan, which we already basically do anyway. And the way the law is written, you can have multiple repayment plans because every time there's a heat advisory, you can go out of your rear, we'll reconnect you, and then we would have a payment plan. And if that happens three months later, you could potentially have multiple payments. Is, as you know, I'm not a legislative tracker, but that's how it's worked. Um, so, or we could choose not to do repayment plans and just require payment and, yeah, do the disconnect service at the end of the heat advisory. But right now, probably it's just like a current policy to be compassionate and offering a repayment plan.
Oh, it just seems to me that we don't operate in, uh, yeah, we decline it.
Yeah, and some people might decline their repayment plan and just pay their bill in the ballpark, you know. But that's how the bill is designed.
Councilmember Litt?
Yeah, so this is here. The utility should promptly make a reasonable attempt to reconnect service to a dwelling at which water was disconnected due to lack of payment. But at which the residential customer has requested, and it's not, no, it has requested, but we've got them, but. So my point would be that really we're only talking about a, like, it, the action, I guess, has to be made. They have to, like, walk down or call or down the interwebs and actually request that this happens. So you're actually already limiting a, a number of, like, the, you know, there's layers to actually make this happen. It's not like the city has to then reach out to the people on the list and start saying, hey, do you need this? Do you need this? Or in an emergency situation, would you like us to, like, the onus is on them. That's what I'm, that's what I'm trying to clarify.
There are two categories. The first category is you are, you have current water service, but, and I don't know how often this would happen, but let's say tomorrow is utility shut off day. And, uh, on average, right now, we have a list between six and ten people, or six and ten residences that are on the utility shut off list. Although last month, kudos to our, really quickly, kudos to our staff. We call people who are going to be shut off and remind them and ask them to come in and pay their bill. So last month, we had no utility shut offs. So let's say tomorrow is u- utility shut off day and it also coincides with the heat event. So the first category of people is we cannot cut you off.
Got it.
The second category is, the category you're talking about, is you're already disconnected. There are two kind of conditions. You have to ask us to reconnect you and we have to make a reasonable attempt to do so.
Right. Okay, that makes sense. Yeah, so, but there is not a world in which it's the the responsibility that falls onto the city to say, let's go down the list and start calling people, because this is happening, and go back out and reconnect all their services. It, in my mind, it seems, as it's written, how I'm understanding it is, yes, there's the first call, you're like, hey, we're about to do this, but we're not going to, because we know this is coming. But then there's the second category, it's like, we're not going to do anything, you know, unless we get a call and we say, yep, we're going to go try to make that, we're going to try and make this work for you. It is not that we're going to, like, actively pursue fixing that problem across the board, because that's a different drag on city time, hours, resources, et cetera.
Potentially, and I, I see, um, City Attorney Kenny's hands up. I think there might be some state legislatures that envision this going that far into a third category of the city making affirmative attempts. But the way I interpret this is limited to, you're disconnected, you request reconnection and we make a reasonable attempt to do so. But, um, I want to hear it, City Attorney.
Good, good evening, Mayor, Council. Um, I would turn my video on, but the video feature is disabled. Um, so I can turn, turn that on if it's, uh, uh, flipped. I, I was only going to note that one of the provisions that was added is that there is an affirmative, um, obligation on the city to provide notice on the invoices or on the bills um, of the opportunity, um, to take advantage of the turn back on if something is shut off. And so while I do agree, uh, Councilmember, that it is not an obligation on the city to go around find people that qualify and reactivate, uh, water, it, it, there is an obligation to do the notification so that they are aware of that opportunity should it arise.
A utility bill or some form of, yeah.
Right, so, you know, following this meeting, you know, this week, we need to, um, before the issuance of the next utility bills, we need to put that language on each of them.
Are there any other, are there any other questions or discussion on this one? Uh, this is one we do have to approve this evening.
Yeah, and there's an agenda bill in the, um, right?
So happy to, uh, give an option. This is twenty-three forty-six, sorry. Uh, just making sure I hold up the right one. Then chapter nine, one, two, right?
Yeah, okay. I move to approve agenda bill twenty-three dash forty-six. Um, adopting an ordinance, amending development and support code, chapter nine point zero two, providing perseverance ability and setting in effectively.
Need further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Motion passes. Uh, next item is to discuss the connections of waivers for municipal utilities for discussion and consent, the end of this data exam.
Um, so this is the companion piece of the legislation to the, um, heat, uh, heat issue. Um, this one is a little different, so you do not have an ordinance in front of you. Um, this is, I have a slide to just kind of walk through what this new, um, sort of, uh, legislation calls for. Um, this too is effective July twenty-third, uh, but it's, um, it's optional. And so I wanted to kind of walk through what would be required if we want to take advantage of this legislation. So effective July twenty-third, cities are now allowed to implement programs that waive connection fees for utilities for properties owned or developed by organizations that provide specified housing services. So what's included are nonprofits, housing authorities, organizations that provide emergency shelters, transitional housing, permanent supportive housing, and affordable housing. So before we decide that we want to waive fees for any of these kinds of organizations, the city must first determine if the organization is eligible. So for, um, affordable housing, it's defined under RCW thirty-six dot seventy-eight dot oh three oh, and that's residential housing with monthly costs, including utilities other than telephone. They do not exceed thirty percent of the monthly income of a household. So, um, that would be for affordable housing units, and these are new units coming in, um, that need connection fees. They're not pre-existing. Um, emergency shelters, so temporary shelter to house and, uh, to shelter unhoused persons that do not require a lease or occupancy agreement. Transitional housing, Acres of Diamonds in the City is an example of trans- transitional housing. Um, housing or supportive services, um, that provide two years with the goal of moving into independent living and then permanent supportive housing, which is subsidized lease housing. So the first criteria is that it's only quite the benefit, and it's only to waive their connection fees to the utility. And during the last year, I don't know how much those fees tend to be.
I think annually in the four oh one, which is the water operations fund, they're going to budget forty to fifty thousand dollars in late fees. It's more than you'd think, but.
And then the second part of this, which is why this is kind of a first touch to council, is if we want to create this waiver program, um, we need to establish a waiver through ordinance, we have to draft an ordinance. And the ordinance must indicate how the waived connection charges will be funded. So it's not just creating an ordinance that allows for this type of program. We have to identify in the ordinance how it would be funded when the ordinance gets passed. And so that's why you don't have an ordinance here. And we would need, you know, council direction on, one, if we want to do it, and two, how we would define the, the waiver connection fees.
Councilmember Naplin and then Schaefer?
Yeah, I'm just trying to understand, these connection charges, are they reconnected after disconnected? Are we talking about like general ability charges, like the big dollar amounts? New development, they feel like connection. Okay, I like the fact that it requires us to come up with a plan to meet the utility goal. So I think that's something that always makes me nervous, is that, you know, calculate those numbers because the utility needs it to function, um. Do we, so for affordable housing, um, like would those units within Toll Brothers count?
No.
Okay.
Hopefully not. I'd have to look, this is only see thirty percent of the monthly income council. So I would need to go look at our agreement and see if that meets the thirty percent.
Okay.
But, uh, Sam McNabb said, talked about the, uh, new things for our transitional housing and shelter. And we actually are going to have a project that came in that could take advantage of a policy that's created through an ordinance.
Yeah, for like an organization like Wakers and nonprofit, I just would want to suddenly have a lot of these just below market affordable units, suddenly we're having to subsidize all their connection charges that could rip out of hand quickly. So I'd just like to know, involve them.
Um, Councilmember Schaefer and Lovett?
Yeah, I, this, you know, frankly, this idea bothers me, uh, quite a bit. I guess, yet another thing that, uh, you look at and on the very surface of things, it seems to be, oh, this would be a feel-good thing for, for charitable organizations or people who are in dire need of housing, that type of thing. However, uh, I have a much, uh, different, uh, opinion. Uh, affordable housing, uh, we already subsidize affordable housing as a city. Uh, I don't see any reason that we should subsidize it yet more, uh, with, you know, free, reconnect, uh, charges. I think that's absolutely the wrong thing to do, uh, with, with affordable housing. And besides apps, not putting me who that, who that, uh, uh, goes back to as a benefit developer, uh, probably. Uh, I'm not in favor of benefiting the developers, uh, and they already are getting enough tax rates, uh, from this anyway. Uh, and, uh, it certainly does not, I actually take no benefit for the city, in fact, I see better than for. Uh, emergency shelter, uh, I'm not sure what that means, but Acres of Diamonds might be a good example of, of that. Uh, we, we contribute to Acres of Diamonds directly as a city. I much prefer to make it a direct contribution, uh, as opposed to something, you know, like a free, free connect charge on a community facility, like, uh, they might, might, they'll go a lot of work in anything, uh, and works for that. Uh, transitional housing, um, that might be Acres of Diamonds as, as well. Let's say in common there, permanent supportive housing, uh, like we have any, and frankly, I think it's a bad idea for the fall to have that, uh, in here. So I don't see any of these categories that make any sense to me at all. If we're going to contribute to a worthy organization as a city, let's do it directly, not indirectly through this, this type of thing. So this is optional, thank goodness, uh, I'd say we do it some extent.
Um, just a point of clarification, we do have permanent support housing in Newville, it's been, I think, over fifteen years now. Um, Holborn has.
Holborn's, yeah.
Um, so they do have permanent support housing.
Yeah, and same, same con for them as I did for Acres of Diamonds. Let's contribute to them directly, which we do, uh, as a city, and not indirectly to supplement those.
Uh, Councilmember Lovett?
Yeah, my concern is, uh, I share some of the same concerns that Barbara voiced, but I would also add on to it, there's just like a fiscal concern for me. I mean, as we run out of places to collect permitting type of fees, other areas that we develop more and more, like some of these connection fees, I would imagine, I may be wrong, but we rely on some of this to just, like, inbound funds to fund other things inside of our community, be it economic development, be it staff, be it the police department. However, it is allocated eventually, this is, this is money that we're actually counting on. And as, you know, as we see more and more development kind of solidify in some of these other communities and we have less and less just actual space in Duval for these types of things, I think the gray area, I mean, if, you know, with ordinance where people could try to, you know, move this in and we wouldn't be able to collect on, on, on those things, particularly for developers. I, I have to say, I agree. I think this gets into a bit of a, I think it gets into a bit of a slippery slope, whereas we could, you know, use that money for good in other places. Uh, and I would be inclined to think of it that way.
Thank you. Uh, Councilmember, or, sorry, name for time, I can't do. Um, under the potential, you know, in the parentheses at the very end, general funds grants, by grants? Do you mean like outside grants or you mean like us creating a grant program and then assessing? I was just curious. Uh, so that's not my language. So I couldn't find any samples of an ordinance yet that's been passed by municipality doing this work.
Mm-hmm.
So I don't have a sample to provide you. Um, the MRSC article identified and the legislation identified that the, you, if the city had a grant pool that they had gotten from HUD or something, you could identify that in the ordinance as what you were paying the connection fee from. Um, the, the way the legislation is written, you just have to identify revenue stream in the ordinance. Um, it didn't have any more specificity of what grant.
Um, would we, yeah, Councilmember Soppel?
Yeah, I, I don't have any clear vision as to what impact this would have on our budget that we pass, you know, how much how much we're going to be losing here to our general funds grants. I, you know, I don't have any idea what the dollar, instead of talking about it, so. You know, without a clear indication of our ballpark figure, I'd be hesitant to, uh, what, you said it's been forty million bucks?
Uh, we budget annually fifty thousand in late fees.
This is for facility?
Yeah, no, no, my general facility charge, the water connection, uh, right, all of those.
We have to, yeah.
Uh, question I have is, um, when it identifies a funding source, um, oftentimes cities do subsidize affordable housing through their fee structures. Um, is that allowed through our fee structure for water service, um, to subsidize to provide that connection charge waiver for affordable housing developers? And the reason? And the reason I pass that is because having been involved in these issues in Olympia for the last almost twenty years now, one of the biggest challenges to getting affordable housing built is the fact that it is, affordable housing is not profitable to build. And developers have to be able to pay the bills in order to build the affordable housing, which is creating more and more challenge to developing the housing that's necessary to support our workforce and those that are less fortunate in our communities. Duval has a poverty rate of less than two percent. We don't have a lot of affordable housing, we're not meeting our, our targets that we're supposed to be meeting. We're way below that. And it's not just about hits to the city's general fund. We have businesses that can't get people to work because they can't live near Duval. And so I think that's beyond the, the big first hit. The reality is, is that there probably aren't going to be many units coming to Duval beyond what we already have. But those units could be the difference between people in our community being housed and unhoused, as well as our businesses finding the workers that they need and not finding them. So I just wanted to throw that out there and ask that question of Director, City Administrator McNabb, on the funding source. Let me make sure that I understand what you're saying. So question, part of the question is more commentary, but the question is, can our rate structure be used to fund as our, as our water cookups, water sewer events? Can those be used as a funding source and just like we do with other items, adjust the rates accordingly? Other cities do that with other items. And so that's just the clarification question I was asking. Now, it sounds like council's not supportive of this, but it is a question that I would like to answer.
Yeah, I can find that out. I'm pulling the exact language. When I read it initially, so under, I have the bill in front of me. It says, connection charges waived under this chapter shall be funded using general funds, grant dollars or other identified revenue stream. So I think identified revenue stream would cover our rate structure? I, hopefully, City Attorney will bail me out here.
I'm doing legislative analysis here.
I'll just, I'll just quickly go, I was doing the same thing that you were doing. I, I, I think the reason that the utility dollars are not included in that subsection two that you were just reading is because those are already earmarked dollars for specific purposes and other RCWs. And, and this is, this is a provision that kind of lives on its own for separate purposes, not for the, because technically speaking, you could have ratepayers for utility that are not residents of the city. And so really, you know, dollars coming in on a utility are earmarked for those utility purposes. And so I think the reason that it's not listed as one of those items here, because it would be one of the first ones I would think of as well, Mayor, and it's not there, is because those are earmarked dollars.
Thank you. Councilmember Mercer?
So sort of a follow-up question to the mayor's comment. I just wanted to sort of revisit something you said, because I think it was an important call out. Is, I agree with a lot of the comments that were made in terms of how we subsidize organizations directly versus essentially subsidizing low-income development. But I think one of the calls the mayor made was specifically important in terms of, particularly when we get around surveying what we're doing more broadly is, if we're trying to incentivize construction or, or building a base, the hardest thing to get through is not operational funding, organization of retirement is getting the housing. But so that's an important call out in terms of what we're trying to incentivize. And the second piece was really just around, and this is really more of a question, it's a financial question. It's, you know, it sounds like there's not a possibility to essentially just shift how we subsidize. We already subsidize low-income housing today, sort of directly by agreements with builders and do various things. You essentially could shift that to instead of providing funds to incentivize low-income development, you essentially, you're incentivizing through a reduction of the connection charge. So you're just shifting, you could have the same funding source at use today. It would essentially just be a pass-through, it would pass into a utility and the credit would be instead of a, you know, here's a credit of money, it would be here's a credit to the connection charge. I don't know if there's a benefit to that, you know, structurally or for other reasons why they would, would want to do this language. But I love the agreement. I've not seen this as an add-on to something we do today, you know, an additional subsidy. But if there was a benefit to shift how we subsidize that low-income housing through this approach, I don't have any objections to doing that. You're still getting the same outcome and you're essentially incentivizing an increase in stock, housing stock that might not otherwise be available. That would not come from directly subsidized any organization, so.
Thank you. And I do want to ask the point of information question to make sure that I've got it correct. Director Thomas, correct me if I'm wrong, I do seem to remember Acres of Diamonds asked for a connection discount or relief.
So they request sort of two thousand twenty number revolution that allowed them to go to the permitting process without paying more unless it was third-party review. It didn't include the connection fee, that was their request at that time as well, but the council did not move forward with that portion of the request.
Thank you. And this, one of the further point of information is that that was a nonprofit, they had to hire a builder to do the work. So that's another facet of this situation. City Administrator McNabb and Dr. Lucheski.
And I think now with this legislation, if Acres of Diamond came in hypothetically, but likely with another project in the near future, they made the connection fee waiver request again, we would have to say no because we have not adopted this. And so in order to say yes to that particular request, we would need to do this program under this legislation.
So another item on me, hopefully, on Virginia first. I know the question was asked on water sewer connection charges as well as the reduction in transportation park impact fees. I'm not a hundred percent sure. I think the city gave a reduction on utility connections, but not with the impact fees because the city technically by law under transportation impact fee and park impact fees would have to pay itself back for that deficiency. So I know that has happened in the past. I'm not arguing either way, it's the point. And then the budget, so one point six five million is the annual expectation currently for pension charges. We've taken in six eighty-four, so a little more than her. Another question too, the way I read this, this excludes obviously new construction that isn't here. Does not preclude expanding someone's structure that may serve that. But it reads to me, the only word is loose in my opinion is organizations. I don't think that qualifies as Toll Brothers per se, but I think this is intended for more of the whole links of the world.
Yeah, let me see if it defines.
Yeah, while you look that up. And then the one last thing, like you all see on your Puget Sun Energy Bill, maybe the city's interested in facilitating that, if they do it with the, like, check the box here, if they like to donate to the warm fund, right? You see that on your utility bill, maybe that's a way to supplement this program without actually redirecting city funds that they, or the city and adjusting those fees to cover that.
So the definition here is whatever city wakes or delays collection of stuffings or this connection fees or hookup fees for low-income persons, a class of low-income persons, or a nonprofit organization, public development authority, housing authority, those are, you have to find things. Or a local agency that provides emergency shelter transitional housing or permanent supportive housing or affordable housing. So the, the definition language is a local agency that provides those things. So it would not include a developer.
Who may have provided a low-income house.
Right.
Situation for, in this case, a good old legacy. Those are all.
It does not appear to be eligible.
Mayor Mercer, can I read?
So a couple of things, just good to discuss them so far. I really, you know, agree with a lot of what Councilmember Mercer said. I, I mean, to add to that, I, I don't know that doing this would like really open the floodgates, you know? I mean, just to put that out there, I was curious if you identify a revenue stream, can you cap it and say, you know, if it's general funds, can you say the only up to? It's not like you have it's all or nothing, right? Like, well, we have to waive and accept them all, or can you put in? Because I mean, otherwise, how would you budget for that? Like, you have no idea. So I was just curious, I'm assuming that a lot or hoping, because I think that would be a lot more reasonable to devote a certain amount or do a supplementary program like Director Lucheski said about. And like, hey, you want to give, this is what it goes toward, you know, and so to develop the fund like that.
I wish I could say that the legislative language says anything other than connection charges waived under this chapter shall be funded using general funds, grant dollars or other identified revenue streams.
Okay.
That's it.
I did get a turn to the question.
I did just look up the House Analysis, House Bill Report, or House Bill Analysis Report. And it is in the testimony in support of, it was clear that the intent is to not have it impact ratepayers and that it come from the general fund. And there were requests, businesses people testifying in favor. And it says specifically there are some issues to address in this bill. As it should strike language referring to legal entities, focus on nonprofits and clarify that the money for the waivers will come from the general fund rather than ratepayer dollars. So there's the intent. Councilmember Neffler?
Yeah, I just wanted to double check. So what, I think your question might have been is how much kind of per unit are we looking at if we waive this? And I think it's maybe about twenty-five thousand dollars per unit.
It's based on size of service?
Like assuming it's a.
Yeah. Nine to ten grand a pop.
So is it only the water or would it be the central utility charge?
I guess it can be either utility connection, right? It doesn't differentiate.
Then if you.
And so it has super water in store.
So you're at least twenty-five or more thousand dollars per unit. So I guess my worry is if it has to come out of the general fund or some kind of other money, I mean, one large connection, you know, obviously it would be ten units and a structure isn't exactly ten times that. But it can really add up and I don't think we have an identified revenue stream. And so I really like Councilmember Shaper's suggestion that on a case-by-case basis, if a nonprofit comes to us and says, leave help us, we could provide funding maybe directly. It wouldn't necessarily say this is to cover your, I don't know, do you know what I mean? And so they could manage whether you have the funds available, things like that. I don't know. Because otherwise, I mean, yeah, it could get a little out of hand, the reimbursement, where to get the money from.
Yeah, and to answer a specific part of your question, it is not on just water alone, it's municipal utilities.
Yeah, some water stores store, that could get.
And, you know, one thing we could do, so I'm not hearing, Cynthia, please bring this back next month. Once municipalities start adopting this, I can do a check in six months or so and see if more municipalities have adopted this. Bring it back and let you kind of look at what other cities are doing this. Right now, it's so new that I couldn't find an exemplar to bring to you all. But because it's effective next week, I want you all to be aware.
Thank you. I think we can move on to our last agenda item. Eight HBL service contract, agenda number twenty-three dash forty-five. Director Thomas?
Good evening, Mayor and Council, and if there's anybody left in the audience. So they knew they are moving forward with our comprehensive plan amendment. We have a contract in front of you. Within the packet, I provided the request for proposals. The key responses we were seeing, we had a contract and a scope of work. It did honestly come in significantly over what our original estimate was from over a year ago. We had a budgeted for about two hundred and fifty thousand for the transportation portion, about a hundred and fifty thousand for the comp plan portion. I would say the couple of compelling reasons why it came in over a couple, because there aren't very many consultants out there, so you're taking a premium. The legislature made changes this year, they're requiring us to do different things that haven't anticipated. And so it did come in ninety-nine thousand six hundred and fifty dollars over budget. I talked to Cynthia, we had some internal conversations. So we are going to have a conversation with our communications person, who Jason and I had a first conversation with him today to see if potentially he could take on some communications pieces. Maybe not in whole, but we could see whether it's for the comp plan or maybe it's for the prep, build and open space plan. It is a little bit complex for communications and getting engagement with comp planning. It's not necessarily straightforward and easy. For this particular contract, just the communication piece is over thirty-three thousand dollars. And then probably for the park plan, it bring about twenty-five of the estimates that we've seen. But we're committed internally to go back and see if we can do any portion or valuable work so that potentially we can bring that cost down. If we don't think that we can do it, or we're not confident that we can do it, then we'll have maybe a little bit of cost savings in an apartment, you know, if we're down on staff. Or we'll have to look at potentially the contingency fund or general fund reserves.
Councilmember Shaper?
Well, say, I guess as you look at a question and a comment. So the, the work that we asked the consultant to provide us for, that is the bare minimum requirement of the GMA. Is that correct? I assumed it was, one made sure, nothing, nothing extra. And then, okay, and then my, my comment, you know, I got a little bit of feeling like we're being held hostage in a couple of ways. First of all, the state and the GMA requirements, you guys have heard me talking about this before. I think it's completely unfair and not applicable to cities like Duval. Other places perhaps, like Seattle, but not to Duval. Nonetheless, we have to comply and I, I understand that. The other reason I think we'll be held hostage is exactly what you said, Director Thomas. There isn't very many consultants that are going to do this, so they're going to start charging premium rates. And I understand there are added requirements by the state, but, but in addition to that, the consultant is probably taking advantage of the fact that there is not too many, too much competition out there and trying to charge this over charges. So I am all in favor of doing whatever work we can internally. And I understand that's a challenge in itself, but if that's possible, I certainly, certainly be in favor of that.
Councilmember Neffler? Yeah, I have a question about the transportation portion, the model. And the, this has been a question that's come up before. Our current model doesn't have some features and sometimes the results don't reflect like real-world experience of driving. Like, you know, the fact that often that when you build Duval, Main Street, you know, the people who are trying to take a left end up filling up the queue and backing up. And so then people who want to go straight can't even get through the light because all the people who are, don't have room to get into the left-hand turn. So there's no concept that you run out of room in the queue to get in the turn pocket. And there's some other things that had been talked about before. And Transpo had said, you know, the model isn't built with that, those things, those factors. It can be enhanced to include some of those. And so I had been hoping that when we work on our model this time, that there could be some of those enhancements possibly to make it more real-world. And the reason why it's important, in my opinion, is not just. To make it more real world, and the reason why it's important, in my opinion, is not just for our own planning of our own projects. It's this model, from what I've seen, is the model that. Other developers end up using when they test their transportation impact, but our model is not very robust. And you know, if a developer comes in, is going to do this big project, they get to use this model that doesn't really represent real world stuff in many situations. And underestimates the true impact, um when you can't, don't have turn pockets big enough, or I mean, I just think about myself going down. One forty fourth or whatever, and uh I want to take a right, and I get down, and I'm like, there's someone waiting to take a left, and I am stuck there. For this person trying to take a left forever, because it doesn't take into account that when you get there, you can't go, that someone might be blocking your way. Um anyway. Um so what I'm wondering is, is within this, it didn't really look like. There was much work on improving the model, it was basically let's just get the new counts, if we get new counts. Make our existing model turn the dials to make it work and kind of fit. But it didn't look like there was necessarily any work on. I don't know, maybe you can answer that, but I didn't see a lot of room for some of those improvements that have been talked about in the past. So I'm I'm wondering if you could answer. Whether you see that as being. Um possible within the current scope. For some of those enhancements to be done.
Evening again, Steve Lucheski, thought works, so on this one in particular, you're you're already at the cut the grass level, and.
I know.
Overall programming is at the. High level uh over there when we're deltailed, so I think that's uh. Maybe a question for a different time, depending on how it shakes out, we can always do a change. But if we see we get and we want more detail, and we would do a contract amendment to add more detail, we can do that too. Um and I I think that specificity of individual intersections and how they are modeled. You know, we all know levels of services along state route don't fall concurrency, so whether it's a F or an F, it's an F, right? So there wouldn't be uh impact per se from the development, because it's already failing, right? Because if it's a D and it goes to an E, then that's a, that's a, there's a bit of a fix. So there's some things that are interesting and good to know, some things I would say are. Aren't going to help only though, because we know something's failing already, so. I mean, almost Laura has more information on the scope specific to the transportation, you have your your base work that has to get done. If we don't like how that is shaking out, we we could always have that before detail, it costs more, we don't have to add it now. Um you know, drag later.
I guess my real question was, if I wasn't sure if the current scope was taking that into consideration, and I just didn't. Know how to do it, but it sounds like no enhancement of the model.
No, the transportation portion did come under the budget, so there is a level that is about, probably about twenty thousand dollars. That remain within uh the engineering budget that, you know, we could potentially look at. After, maybe we have one of our, when we have our kickoff meeting internally with Transpo, we can talk about that, okay? And see what what that additional costs will be.
Quick point of very crucial, um because two oh three is a state highway, we don't control it, we don't get to determine when it's improved or expanded. Um well, we can't, you. We're not going to get help, we can't just expand, span it through, we'll not expand it, elsewhere, else you're not going to have a system impact. Um so um. As we know, most of our transportation comes from outside of King County. Um so I mean, I think what I want to know before. I support spending additional money, is is that actually going to be a benefit to the city? In our processes, um because as we're talking about this comp plan is already going to cost a lot more than planned. And I don't want us spending money on things that are not going to actually impact the bottom line of transportation. And would prefer that that money be, you know, a personal professional recommendation be to prefer that that money be spent on things that actually move that needle. Um so I I will request, you know, that as we get more into the scope later on. Um that professional opinion from Director Lucheski of Transpo Group on um on the value of those dollars spent. Um not saying it's. Good or bad, just saying that I I want that that detailed information, because as we've been trying to get just the two oh three study. Um we have money in the budget for our lobbyists, but this is. Uh costs are going up with everything, um there are your consultants, there are people to do the work, um as we know in life. Uh it's very difficult to find planners, let alone get people to stay at consulting firms to do the work. And everybody in the state is doing this work at the same time, um so there are a lot of options. Um and um you know, I just really want to make sure that if we're doing this, that we. Are getting a bang for our effort.
So uh within this one, not the whole packet, but each sixteen, so under model calibration and validation, um. So the model parameters will be adjusted, so the model reasonably matches with the tracker count data and observe tra- travel patterns. I mean, that's not exactly that's trying to, you know, mimic what exists. To set the base. But I do think, you know, we can't believe we have twenty thousand uh. Extra per se, but if we want to consider enhancements. When we get to the place that we might want to spend, we we have the opportunity always, so.
Director Thomas, do you need a decision on this?
Yes, please, because we're going to kick off next week. If we get past.
Thank you for that question.
Thank you.
Um would someone like to make a motion?
Luke, I want to understand the debate for the decision, but we still have the option of. Of using our communication.
Making sense.
Or. For here, could be part of this work or.
So the contract as is is for the whole amount, we would come back and do a contract amendment, I've already talked for A H P L. But we need to know that we that we can do this work, because once we start. That work has to progress, because we have less than eighteen months, so it's just working with Jason. To see, is this, you know, is this something that he feels that he can do, is it a priority of the city? Is there the value for him to spend? I figured out that it's probably about fifteen hours a week over the next, I'm sorry, a month, sorry, a month, fifteen hours a month, if we over. Sorry, I forgot, over the next eighteen months, if we do the comp plan. You know, that communication piece, but for the park plan, it might be an easier start to like kind of gnaw on it, to get. The feet under the legs of our communication, because it's one piece, one body of work, it's just the parks. And it's a little bit less work, and it's a little bit easier work.
So are are you asking for the approval of the extra hundred thousand budget?
Yes, that's what's in. Yes, the ninety nine thousand six hundred and fifty, but that's not, that's not the communication piece, that's the entire overage for the contract. The communications piece is about thirty six thousand dollars.
Okay, okay, I I'm sorry, yeah, I misunderstood this, but that's the potentially we'd be offsetting part of that thirty six thousand dollars. Not the ninety nine thousand dollars.
No.
Okay. And and what are, I I think I know the answer, but what are our options if we say no? Uh that this leaves us high or low, is it not?
I meant need you out of compliance.
Yeah.
And we're already out of compliance by several years on our comprehensive management plan, our extra open space plan. Making us ineligible for grants and actually federal funding at the urgency level right now. Uh C M P is obviously going to be handled by our emergency management coordinator. Uh but park trails and open space then is altering or holding our ability to. Obtain certain grant funds and state funding for our parks. As it stands today, and has been for four years now, I would. Um and being out of compliance also comes with lots of other financial consequences for the city.
And I think too, that, you know, maybe even a little bit of the GMA, and the correction step up of legislative process. But you always want to go back to your community about every ten years and do a check in, and that's what this is really about too, it's just that. The state has added some additional pieces, you know, really in housing, in some cases in the environment, and sustainability enforcement as well. Um so I like to think that, you know, it is good to do planning every decade, you know, whether or not it's mandated.
Yeah, not, yeah, I'm certainly not arguing that, I I guess just what I'm trying to understand is, do we really have a choice here? Tonight, I mean, a practical choice or 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 not, and I think the answer is. No, I think we have to go ahead and approve the extra budget amount. Otherwise, otherwise, we're going to pay a price. In other other areas, but specifically not being eligible for grants.
And staff, we have no more capacity to do any tasks on our own, honestly, like it's going to be a stress for us.
Understood, yeah, yeah, okay.
Uh yeah, thank you, not to be too far out of the term, but I can assure you that reducing the thirty six thousand, let's say that's the exact number. Communications portion is not, even if Jason took it on, is not what you're going to say, because they still then also have to coordinate on his work, that is. So going into their system, there's an opportunity as well as. What happens when something else pulls them away from those fifteen hours a month, then you slow the whole project down, I mean. We're all for pitching in and do all, and I don't know that you want to.
Yeah.
Really weigh in on trying that at this point.
Yeah, yeah, so what I said.
It's a big project, I'm just stupid, isn't right, I'm not, I know, I I'm I'm for for that, but I'm just speaking at a turn. Seeing this have happened, we always try and. We usually didn't be enough, and one way or another, because we over permitted. And then now you're you're committing a call to something that was already programmed to do something else. To try to save it, and again, that's the right thing when it's when it's practical, but.
Sure.
It's so, this is such a big project, I don't know that that's going to help in the end, you know.
No, that's a good, that's a good point, Steve, but like, when I when I said, I'd like to see what we can do internally, I was thinking. Well, you know, we could offset this hundred thousand dollars, you know, the kind kind of thing, but since that's, since that's not possible, uh. I I think we just have to go ahead and approve this tonight, once, you know. Unless we pay a totally dire response for the number of years.
Mayor President Henry?
Yeah, I think, you know, I get that concern, and it's always hard to know, um but I'm sure that moving forward with this. Um that if staff is able to turn it down here and there within reason, to also balance the other responsibilities that other staff have, that they will. Um I don't know how much opportunity there will be, and there's a cost to that too, it's just, you know, so with that, I just wanted to move to approve. Agenda Bill twenty three dash forty five, approving a contract for services and authorizing mayor to sign a contract for four hundred ninety nine thousand six hundred and fifty dollars of A H P L.
Starting. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Motion passes unanimously, and with that, we have no further business, so unless there are objections, we can adjourn it.
Yes, I know, not open much of that very.